... What the leaves is to the fire of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
David, I can tell you, most people in here are high state buckeye fans.
Yeah.
After watching, uh, you know, when Ryan Day is worried about his kids going back to school, there's a problem. And, uh, I do, I love high state, I love high university. I love high state. But they're fans. You know, if they want to win the national championship, they'll still be down on Ryan Day because he can't be measured.
Yeah.
But, uh, I guess when you take that job, you understand that.
Yep.
But, uh, well, the offense, the offensive play calling was very innovative. It was just, I was so impressed with what he, he running in the middle where everything is. So, uh, I thought that, and I don't blame, somebody up in the box is seeing something that looks like there's a seam or a crease there that they can get through. It wasn't.
Yeah, you think that, yeah.
Alita, you're up first.
Hello. Well, we've been pretty busy since the water, the weather's turned colder. We brought in, well, Friday we brought in fifteen puppies that someone had dumped. And we brought in a total of four hundred and thirty-two. Um, three hundred and fifteen has been euthanized.
Is that for the year?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I was, I thought it wasn't gonna be a month.
Oh, yeah. I mean, there's been a couple of months that we've had a hundred bring in. But that was on a, basically a cruelty situation. We're getting a lot of homeless people that their dogs, they can eat food, whatever. We take from the Humane Society when they get free dog food, but their dog food's coming up a little short. So, instead of us bringing these dogs in, because I know ones that brought in are gonna be euthanized, we know. So, I'm thinking about if you guys could help with like dog food or something, so we could help these people. It's also the elderly, they can't afford anything. You know, they're on a fixed income. And I mean, I do help what I can with dog food and straw. We usually go up there to Gear parts and get straw force and, uh, put it in our trucks. We give out to the people.
I'm not a, I'm not a heartless person. But if I can't afford to go to five guys, I don't go to five guys. If I have to eat thin baloney, I eat thin baloney. The mentality, I, I don't understand the mentality of, of having something you can't take care of yourself that you have to take care of.
Yes.
So, uh...
But a lot of these dogs, I think, or these people, they, they, that's the only thing they have left. You know what I mean? I mean, yeah, they've lost their home, they've lost everything, but they have that dog. And that's their comfort, I guess. You know what I mean? And I mean, they're not, none of these dogs are skinny. I mean, they're well-fed. I don't know if they don't feed theirself and give it to their dog, I don't know. But, I mean, we've had to stop there by Charleston Pike who gave out dog food. Cause they didn't have none. And I actually gave them a coat, him gave them a coat. I was so happy to have that coat, so.
Well, you can't give them all a coat.
No, you can't, but...
And I'm, again, that could be me, I could be down in Main Street. Uh, I, I doubt that would be my location, I would probably not be in a, in a commune with all these people together.
Yeah.
Uh, but, uh, that could happen to any of us at any time.
Oh, yeah.
I go back to saying, I know a dog helps a person live long. It's, it's a common fact. But if you can't take care of a dog, you can't take care of yourself, how can you expect to take care of something else? And it concerns me, uh, is, is a member of dogs being euthanized due to, uh, the shelter being full? Or are the dogs coming in sick? Are they coming in mean and they can't control?
Well, the mean ones, I don't even count them. They, they euthanize if the dog is food aggression. Don't like other dogs. And I get that. But some of these dogs, yeah, they could go to someone that don't have any other dogs. You know what I'm saying? But they just euthanize them because of, you know, they don't, food aggression, dog aggression. Um, sometimes the dog will look at them kind of funny and they don't wanna do it.
How long a period do they, what's the evaluation period?
Uh, well, sometimes it's like seven days, if that. Um, my state law, we have to hold them for three days under the dog warden. And then after the dog warden, it goes to the Humane Society. And then they evaluate them, but I don't know.
Three thirteen out of four thirty-two, seventy-three percent of the dogs they bring in that euthanize, that's what you're saying?
Oh, yeah. That's why even they bring dogs in. I mean, it's, I, I don't know.
I thought that's the same situation as we're doing.
Well, now they get dogs in through the counter. I don't count them, 'cause I don't pick them up. So I don't know what they've got, you know? I know they did have Arvo over the weekend. Um, in one of the big kennels in the back. I don't know what dog it was, but...
So what you talked about the other day, where you went to a house and was...
Sixty-seven dogs.
Big material everywhere and, uh...
Oh, God.
Fifty-seven dogs. Do you think you needed all, they needed all those dogs for comfort?
No, no. No, and that's why we took them. Um, these ones, I mean, these, them dogs was living in horrible conditions. Um, and I do take the ones that's living in horrible conditions.
So the fifty-seven dogs you took, you have to hold them for three days?
Sixty-seven, yes.
Okay, where do you hold them?
We hold them there, but if we remove them, we have fosters come and help take them. Um, GG's up in Columbus, they'll come and get them. If there's, if they're injured, they got something wrong with them, GG's will pay and have it fixed. But, and then, um, Dash Rescue, they help too.
The groundbreaking, I had the opportunity to meet the people from GG, they explained the, all the...
Oh, yeah. They are, they are really good. They help out the Humane Society a lot.
Well... I don't know how you do it, Alita.
Somebody's gotta do it.
Well, I guess...
Somebody's gotta be the voice for these dogs. And it's only us four, so... But we do it.
Any other questions for Alita? Yep, yeah. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Sarah?
Hello. Um, I don't have too much of an update for the oldest program, other than I'm just kind of closing the books up this week. Uh, I'm waiting on our appeals list, we had four appeals. Uh, two of them I think are gonna be approved, I'm still waiting on Hannah to check on the other two. So, that's kind of what I'm waiting on, to come up with the total amount of the checks that I'll cut to the completers of the program. So that's kind of where I'm at this week, but needs to wrap up, so that information will be coming soon.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Danny?
Yeah, I'm just gonna give you kind of a rundown of the maintenance staff of the year in the court. We had one thousand four hundred and forty work orders come in this year. And thirty-six percent of them was completed before the third day that has been requested. Uh, forty-seven of them was completed on time, which is a five-day span. And then we had a thirteen percent overdue, which is over ten days. So, pretty good turnout, you know, completion of work orders for the whole year. I'll tell you...
The big projects, the ten that didn't get done on time?
Some of them was, I tell you, some of them overdue ones was probably the jail locks. Just because they put them in and we had to leave them open until they got the parts in in the right time, you know? And, and obviously, when I give you this other report, you'll figure out where most of them went to. I mean, like, you have four percent work orders at Fifteen North Paint Street. You got fifty-seven percent at the jail, I'll ballpark that. That's where it's been most of the time. And then you got fourteen percent service center, then you have a eight percent like others, that's just special projects, you know, eating paper and stuff like that for all those places. So, I can track back to like four-nine-seventeen, and I think we put this in place in fifteen. I don't know why it wouldn't give me the ten-year look back, but there'd been eleven thousand five hundred and twenty-four work orders coming through the system in an eight-year period. So, I think the guys on your staff is doing a pretty good job getting them completed and keeping everything up to date, so.
I think that's a little number.
Should be, yeah, should be. But, um, that's really it, I just wanna give you the year-end rundown, like I said, and where, where they've been working at the most, you know? And that's really not counting our special projects we do in between, you know?
Work order come in on the weekends from something that's going wrong?
Yeah, and it's, believe it or not, if it comes in like on late Friday, it starts ticking then. I mean, I give you three days till it goes to the fifth day, then after the fifth day, it kind of turns red on our computer. You know, and say, hey, I'm, I'm getting ready to pass due, so they try to get them done in three to five days, basically, unless it's a big project, you know?
Workhouse looks great.
Thank you, yeah, they did a great job on it.
Good job on that.
Yeah. They enjoy that kind of stuff, so, but yeah.
Amazing. Back to two thousand sixteen-seventeen, what was being paid through the courthouse?
Yeah, it's big money, so they saved you a lot of money. Yeah, and they enjoy it, I'm glad to hear about it, you know?
Kind of step that down from Columbus to local to our boys here, and they do a great job.
Yeah, they do.
Any other questions for Danny? Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Joshua?
Uh, just having my monthly report and a couple of things to touch on. Uh, sixty-four permits issued this month. Uh, one hundred and thirty-six inspections for county jurisdictions. Three stop work orders. We brought in twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars in permit fees. Almost twelve thousand dollars in plan review fees, which is basically just to pass through. Three hundred dollars in stop work fees. Thirteen city inspections, which is down considerably since the new guy started for the city building department. And I have to say, it's been a pleasure to work with him. Let's see. Zero stop works for the city, zero city plan review fees, so he's taken some more wing-off for shoulders there. Eleven addresses. I did have a really slow day before last, so contractors often tell me, just stop by any time. But when you do that, it's Godzilla going through Tokyo. It's, it's pretty...
That turned out...
It was interesting. I mean, once we kind of de-escalated things, we've gotten to understand, hey, we're just stopping by and checking in, you know? Uh, we have made some changes as far as in the past, contractors could elect to do a third party for certain things. And we would still follow up and do our inspection anyway. Well, that program exists for a reason, it's to lighten our workload and to allow them to move a little quicker. So, we are not doing, uh, double inspections on things like had been done in the past. And I'm finding some pluses and minuses. Like, I need to go out on the very first inspection and do a little meet and greet kind of thing and tell them some expectations. Uh, visit the, uh, the new Humane Society and I did notice one minor thing that had been overlooked out there, but we can correct it, so it's not a big deal. Same thing on a couple of other projects, but, uh, all in all, everything's pretty good. I did contact Brad on Wednesday with the project that I thought you guys might hear about. I'm supposed to have a meeting with that guy by the day and hopefully we can get everything smoothed out before...
Josh, the Humane Society, is, is it, it's in progress?
It's in progress, and given the weather conditions and everything, it looks to be going as it should, so...
They, they work on it when it's cloudy, it don't come when it's sunny. I'm like...
And it was a nasty day when I stopped by and there was basically one guy just kind of mangy outside, so...
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting thing.
Yeah. You don't, you don't get the good conditions, you're either out and not hot, miserable, cold and muddy.
The settle-student general contractor?
They are, yeah.
Um, are they, are they got the footer and everything in?
Yeah, footer's in, they're starting masonry work, underslam plumbing's pretty well done. Um, like I said, that's been almost, uh, two weeks ago at this point, so I'd imagine the masonry walls are coming up pretty well.
They got the left side started, about a fourth of that, so...
Did work with Andy a little bit on the drone, we're finding out we need to have some licensing, uh, for us to operate the thing. I can definitely see some incredible benefits, keeps us from climbing around on top of roofs and things of that nature. The Delano Industries project, went out to do a footer inspection and, oh my God, I about lost my boots a couple of times. And just because of the mud, and I thought, boy, I could have just blown that drone over here and looked right down at this hole, counted the number of rebar and everything, so...
Drone is, uh, it's fixed a lot of things. I know I once, a guy the other day had a, like a buzzsaw on his drone and...
Yeah.
Hornet's nest and cut right through it, so...
That's true.
You can't get stung that way.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Josh, what, what would constitute a stop work order?
This depends on what it is. A deviation from plans could be one thing, working without a permit could be another thing. I generally encourage David to contact me before one is issued. Put something obvious that might, of course, go ahead. I've issued very few on active projects. Usually it's, okay, we need to get your design revised and we can't proceed until we've done that. Um, and that's the case with the project that I'm currently having problems with. Had, had a situation, that's probably a year or so ago, at Goodwill, the new building out on Industrial Drive. Gentleman called me for consultation, I show up and I call in and Joel's still here then, so I asked, I said, what would be, uh, what's this project that I'm approved for? She said, lonely foundation at this point, I'm looking at a fully erected steel building. I said, uh, guys, I'm really thinking about issuing a stop work here. And they said, well, the state would allow us to proceed as long as, at our own risk, as long as nothing is covered. And so I thought about it for a few minutes and, but, you know, these guys are here working, just trying to feed their families. And I don't think it's direct to send them all over. This general contractor not having anything up to bar, and I basically just said, hey, get everything in order and then we'll move forward, you know?
It's obvious, Josh, you had goodwill.
Yeah, it's generally a last-ish thing. You know, if we show up and there's not somebody there, then we're just gonna post it because we want to keep contact.
Last thing I have, I want you to understand something, the old Godzilla was bad. But the new Godzilla seems like people like him because he fights King Kong.
Right.
I don't know why, he fought some other monster the other day, but he would be considered the old Godzilla.
Okay.
Any questions for John?
Not after that.
Mark?
I hope we don't have a lot, but we had three material incidents in December. Two of them well crashes, one was on private property. They were all minor and only required financial losses from us and EPA. EPA helped. Under the private property business, arranged cleanup. Uh, for planning, we had, we finally got our grant approved. We started the current planning services out of West River, uh, the countywide mitigation plan. There's gonna be a, the first meeting will be on the weekend, we're going to... They're gonna send out the invitations, but I'm gonna send out a preliminary email to kind of give everybody a heads up on what it entails. Exactly what it is. Uh, grants, we, we see, we're gonna receive the next week, it's a little over eighteen thousand dollars reimbursement. Our last cash request, which was for July, August and September. One for this quarter, we do January thirtieth, thirty days after the month. And that's really all we have.
Mark, I did hear the tornado sirens going off yesterday. Uh, are there any that are not, you know, if there's anything that's not working?
I know, it's the one that we got this morning, but generally get an email and others, we get a call from the sheriff's department. I know Richmondville, London, very well. We got Hallsville working.
About two in the city?
B and C's, they're trying to get us a list of ones that were all installed. We're looking at replacing Hallsville and then I think there's one other one that's maybe twenty years old.
Who takes care of, the, the city takes care of the sirens in town?
Right.
So...
That's, that's...
We have nineteen, they have eight.
Definitely, when I hear the sirens in town, they don't sound as loud as what they used to be, but I can still hear them all from the distance. Usually they go off at one o'clock in the morning. There's not a lot of noise creating a, uh...
Panic attack.
Panic attack, especially if the wind's blowing pretty good and there's a lot of lightning going, but, uh... So, Hallsville, again, we're looking at replacing Hallsville's. They were repaired it, I think it was just repaired.
Been repaired three times in a year. Uh, the new one's gonna be about twenty-eight thousand.
Okay. Thanks. John, Kim, you wanna go last, you wanna go next?
Uh, we can go last.
Year-end project, I'm looking on security project stuff, so waiting on the grant, certification, Kim, have more details. It's easier than I do, but I expect something momentarily. Adam set up an EMA with efficiency, social engineer and stuff, uses an opportunity to have conversation about general dangers and targeting. Uh, some issues with phone systems, stuff over Fifteen North Paint, just kind of brought to my attention the last couple of weeks. Verizon's looking at it, held a couple of meetings, supporting providers to find alternatives, 'cause I can feel that they're gonna send me a thirty thousand dollar quote for a new old phone system that I don't really wanna go down that road. Working with Josh, the building department that I mentioned, need for drones and stuff. It occurred to me that that's a need that's probably not gonna go down rather than watch individual partners fly one for themselves. Bought one for the county, uh, working with them, working with maintenance a little bit, showed the guys some of the things it can do. Got a open service center, taking pictures of serial numbers on rooftop units for things. Trying to get my ideas of things that can be done for. Working on that certification stuff. Uh, there are two different ways that you can be certified, Josh has, you know, the prosecutor about a couple of things as well. I'm certified if I'm just in my own private life, you know, so operating for people, they're also allowed to operate under my guidance. So I can be on site while they operate, that's also a legal license, like they do it. So, working through the beginning steps of that. Working on some live stream stuff in here, so I guess we had some needs for online meetings at the same time that were live streaming these meetings. And we've only accessed that panel by one program at a time, so working on maybe a standalone kind of broadcast. It would just be live stream, independent, uh, a bat up there. Some stuff with Corso, IT questionnaires I send every year, some auditor rooms, uh, personnel stuff. Onboarding some new people, the basics, a lot of projects.
What, uh... So, if I purchase a drone, I wanna fly it on my property or maybe during the Fourth of July, fly it up real high, do the fireworks filming, like I see somebody do or three or four do every year. I have to be certified to do that?
You touched on two different areas, you're flying recreationally for your own private daytime line of sight, you have no licensure for that. You fly at nighttime, you're talking licensure. If you're flying over people, you're talking licensure. If you fly for any commercial consideration, monetary or otherwise, licensure. The government has, there's a program, I can't remember what it's called, but essentially you have to have the prosecutor's office send the FAA a letter certifying you are a valid government agency. They send you that, I've never gone that route. I have a part one of seven license through the FAA that allows you to fly at night over people for commercial purposes, more or less whatever. Um, so it depends on what you're doing, where you're doing it, and how you're doing it. Can those people just wink and a nod and fly anyway and not care? Yeah, but I'm...
And so how they track you back?
Well, I mean, they don't have remote IDs anymore, so if there was an incident, rest assured, you find the whole, you know, everything. When you're flying has a little remote ID, it keeps a log in and of it, so I can pull my phone up now and tell you every flight I've taken in the last three years. So, if there's an incident, they'll find you, you're legally required to register your drone anymore. Didn't used to be a requirement, actually that's a five-dollar registration fee, but your name and serial number get attached to it, it's no longer what a car registration is anymore. Are, is everyone doing it? No, probably not, you know, but it's still pretty, you know, pretty good, everything, fly the book. So, kind of wild, wild west stuff. I mentioned the buzzsaw, the drone had a much more low-tech, fighting bees, I had a horn or a yellow jacket ground nest and blowing out a little white powder in the hole and agitating, that flew the little drone right over top of it. They'd fly out, hit the blades. Click, 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 calling in air support all day long, it was a lot of fun, a lot less singing than I'm used to. It's not like, not like a video. It was a lot more fun than I'm used to getting rid of things like that, but, uh... There are a lot of really cool opportunities, David and Josh up there, you can look over rooftop units, zoom in, you can read the serial numbers. Josh can speak more of the technical stuff, the like, the load, the patio, the information that you normally have to go up there and inspect and get up on ladders. We can do it third seconds with a, with a super camera, a distance, so... Trying to, kind of, help make opportunities to make these a little easier, a little safer, extend our reach a little bit of not have multiple departments all that, that puts around having to manage that, so. We've got one available for you, someone wants to use it, until they get licensed, you let me fly or supervise and do those things today.
Can we have a license for the county?
The county doesn't get a license, the individual operators, similar to like, there's not a county driver's license. Individual paintball, they have to be licensed to do it solo. A county operator is what's a remote pilot in command, you know, so you can fly it with me by your side. That's a legal licensing to do, I'm a remote pilot in command. You're flying under my supervision, that's a able to do, sort of like a learner's permit almost, but I think they're trying to keep things open and, you know, allow for people to enter the field without straight licensure stuff, but, you know, to my knowledge, I'm the only one that has one.
Yeah, great, great.
Right, yes, one too.
So the best way to learn is, is practice. Just get out and do it, yeah. Josh, that's real good, you know, so I told him, I was like, just get out and play, you know, fly around in open space and get, get comfortable with it. Because once you get in that dicey spot and forget, it gets a little air, you know, so just good luck.
Don't do it in the wind.
The ones that are being flown, the ones that are being flown by the county are insured or should be insured. If they haven't been yet, I know Greg's are, and they're, and they should have a license, that's part of the insurance requirement.
I think the amazing thing is, is it will return back. The first run that we had in the house, I think we put it into the house first.
Yeah.
That was years and years and years ago.
That's a rite of passage, you have to do that.
It's fine, but now, if the battery level gets to such and such, it, it, that was just time to come back. There are a lot of...
It's back home. There are a lot of failures. The one that I did specifically with the building department at mine has an object avoidance. So if you were to turn that on, you can turn it off. If you turn it on, it'll fly at sixty miles an hour towards a wall, it will stop itself and not let you into that wall. And it's pretty, you know, weird taking that out behind the service center. And it would, you know, recognize power lines, so this thing's using LiDAR at this point to detect these things. Wouldn't let us back into power lines. I don't wanna push and see just how sensitive it is, but that was the bump. That, okay, maybe we're at a half collapsed building, we're in a sketchy spot that we don't wanna, we wanna get inside, but we don't wanna run into anything and then have to go chasing after it and getting a little safety issue. So there are a lot of things like that, this one won't navigate around, you know, an option, I've not tested that one yet, but there's some new features... You know, an option, I've not tested that one yet, but there's some new features like that, if this is communication with your remote control. If we return it home, we'll read it, uh, defined altitude, drop itself right down, bring it to warm, lost the signal. When it hits a certain battery level, or we're turning it home, there are a lot of built-in safety features, just for that reason, so.
Marco, you and Josh.
I'm, I just made myself know to give Andy on that. I was sort of, what commercial would be doing this so high?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking about our emergency sites.
Yeah.
There are other agencies with similar capabilities, they're pretty crowded up here, so.
Well, like none of the town, none of the fire departments have them, so I've made that up for all, all the fire departments.
Sure, that's one.
I think I just talked straight, lots of insurance, I actually forgot about, just mentioned, so. Does somebody contact them directly?
Either way, let's find out what we need. Another question for Randy?
Hi Candy.
Thanks for the talk.
Happy to share. Free and charged.
Uh, one other thing, it's a good segue into Ken and John, we upgraded some equipment over at the service center for these microphone speaker system, this projector. You guys are going to be holding a lot of community, uh, open meetings over there to communicate project status and everything, so we need that conversation going back and forth between these two departments to see what we're still missing, what we need, and find that over there. And evaluating what we're going to accomplish. John or Ken, Ken or John, it's amazing that Devin couldn't be here today, I know he's probably sick because he wouldn't be out hunting.
I'll start off with non-ACG, Appalachian Grant information first. I submitted, working with the sheriff's department, and submitted a body worn cameras current application on their behalf, uh, to the Office of Criminal Justice for ninety-one thousand. So should know probably five, five or six weeks on that one. And as Andy was talking about the Cyber Ohio Grants, we're still waiting on being back on that, it should be this week or next week, we hear back on Cyber Ohio Grants and the 104 sewer project, that additional funding that we've received. Hopefully, uh, we'll hear something soon about those. And I met with the sheriff last week to discuss the upcoming funding on the jet funding that would be available, so we just had some discussions about possible uses of that funding. The flood zone notification, I talked about that in the previous meeting, where there's going to be a banner on the auditor site for the parcels that are in the flood zone, so if somebody selects that parcel, they, there's a banner notification that lets, uh, whoever's looking at the parcel site, let them know that that's in a flood zone. So we have additional notification regarding flood zone now, it's active, so you can check that out. Um, let's see, ACGP, everything's going smooth with the admin that I'm doing, which is processing invoices, you know, working with the state on payments, um, state reporting, everything's going smooth there, we've had no pickups or bumps or anything, and we've got a really good process going on with the state. Our turnaround time is, on getting our invoices paid is, um, it's less than ten days, so that's fine. Although design firms are very happy with that, so it's, it's moving along really smooth. And the same is even, sometimes I'll get feedback from them, response from them on approval of invoices the same day. Sometimes it's been two hours after I submitted. So really happy that they're turning things around so quickly. And then on the comp plan, there's been a lot of work on the comp plan, just identifying members for steering committees, economic development committee, uh, focus groups. I think we have a majority of those individuals selected and notified. Um, we are planning our first big engagement session, it'll be a three day session in January, January twenty, twenty ninth and thirtieth, which is a Tuesday, Thursday. And that will involve, um, a tour for the steering committee. There'll be steering committee meeting and then economic development committee will be meeting on one of those days, so one day's tour. Um, then the steering committee, economic development meetings, and then a town hall and focus groups. And the, uh, town hall meeting, we're gonna have at the Christopher Conference Center. Kirk McAllister was kind enough to, to make that space to us for, for that event. And let's see if we got anything else on here. Right, and I submitted the OFCC application for visitor center. To the OFCC, I said that right? Got a little bit of a cold right here. Um, so we're good there. Oh, you'll probably have noticed also through on Facebook that the conference of plans survey, there's a survey that's active. It's been boosted, Structure Point has paid for that to be boosted, so it's getting a lot more attention. I think we already have over three hundred responses on their survey, which is really good, I feel like, um, just for just a couple of weeks, so it'd be an active on Facebook. Any questions for me on?
Not right now.
Okay. Okay. Uh, the about thirty projects that are part of this grant, uh, nine are using the construction manager risk model. And Chillicothe is kind of the lead on that as far as progress. They have selected their C Mar, construction renter to risk, and, uh, they should have, they, they approved the contract council last week, and they should have them under contract within two weeks, is what I was told last week, so I think they're withholding that name until they actually sign the contracts, so that'll all be coming out soon for their project. And it's good, their project is so large, it's good to have that out in front. The city of Jackson, they selected their C Mar through the RFQ process, but they've not gotten as far along as Chillicothe, but they have done that. We've got, out of those nine, there's, uh, there's two, so six others, yes, have advertisement, including the UNESCO sites here in Orange County. That C Mar RFQ is due Monday, so we should see what kind of response we get for that. That's what the planning office is managing, the commissioners are managing. We do have site visits tomorrow with NPS, if contractors are interested. Uh, we're gonna go to all four sites with thirty-five degrees, if they want, want to join us, you're welcome to do so. And, uh, the Zaleski is the only outstanding project that's doing the C Mar, they're in the progress of development, they're just submitting the RFQ out for advertisement. University of Rhode Island, they're building a new campus over at MacArthur, they did it twice, second time they got a, uh, bid within the budget, so they're moving forward on that project. The other projects are doing design to build a general contracting model of procurement. And so design continues, as Kim said, she's been paying invoices from the engineering firm, so they're continuing their work. Hoping that a lot of these company, or a lot of these projects get, uh, the projects bid this coming spring. That way they have two construction seasons, some of them aren't going to need that, they're smaller. But at least we know some of the bigger ones have two construction seasons to get switched up. There's five projects I'm keeping an eye on, and not because they're, uh, bad eggs or anything, it's just, uh, there could be complications. One is Chillicothe, and part of that's just because it's such a large project, it's twenty-two percent of the budget that project belongs, so we don't, and we don't want that, that's kind of the flagship, we don't want it to fall behind. So I'm just trying to keep an eye on that one. Uh, the UNESCO project, a lot of federal rules because we're dealing with National Park Service, so we're Devin wants me to keep an eye on that because we're afraid we're gonna get one of those gotcha moments where we have to have some federal, uh, rule applied as something we're doing and it slows the project down. Uh, Mount Zion over in Athens, it's a cultural center, it's a, a former black church. It's nonprofit, they just need a lot of handholding, that, that's one of the things there. The Mount Ouro project, finally they signed the land purchase and they were supposed to get their engineer on board last week, I haven't seen the contract. But that would maybe come off my list, it's just, it's been slow, it's behind everybody else, so if they get things going, I'll take that one off my list to watch. And then Georgetown, that visitor center down there, I've spoken about that before, we're working on resolution for that, we're, we're trying to move that, Devin and I talked, we need to have a solution to that by mid-January. Or we're questioning whether that project, that piece of the project, the streetscape will happen, it's whether the visitor center can happen, do we have time to do it?
Uh, we're working on, except the one project that's sure most will serve up.
Yeah, in my mind, yes.
You talked about it last, last month.
Yeah.
I was talking, I was going to ask, I was moving on, the question was that, you know.
Yeah, it's, let's say it's moving forward without the original way it was supposed to move forward, but that's it. Hopefully next month I'll have a good report for you all. Uh, we're hoping in a contractor's open house, it's virtual this Thursday, and Jack and Eric did what you said, Andy's going to be working with us today to block the figure out technology to put that on, so we can, uh, get a lot of as many contractors as we can on that call, Zoom and so those other things have limits on how many people could join, so he's going to show us how to do a YouTube, uh, live session, didn't have it, I never did, uh, you could do that, so. They have, we'll be working on that this afternoon, but, uh, Aaron sent that out to like four hundred people. And the last week, last week we had fifty-four registered for it, so, uh, hoping that'll be to go over all of these projects. Uh, for the CMars, those C Mar projects, they'll be hiring subs. They have to bid those out, so some local contractors could get in on the Chillicothe project possibly. And, uh, on the others, and then your other's general contracting opportunities come spring, we hope. So we want to let people know about these projects, so we can get people to bid on them and get them moving forward. So we're, uh, we think that would be a success. And I know Devin talked to me not too long ago, when this application was put together, I don't think all, everything was known about these projects. And we've had a few amendments we've had to request, and I think some of that stuff, all the amendment, I think you guys have designed, and so just be prepared for those, there, there are nothing major, like we're gonna, you know, we said we'd do A or we'd do B, I think it's gonna be more like in the Georgetown situation, they may not use the building they originally were going to use for the time, or for the visitor center. And I think that's going to require an amendment at the state, so the project will move forward, but maybe at a different location. And those, those types of things will have to ask, uh, for amendment on. But that's just par for the course, the way things are going, so, but just moving forward.
Other moving parts.
Very much so.
I think one that needs total focus right now is the Octantique Park. You know, you, you talk about a project that starts getting mission free, it's the main, the main objective. In that other project, it's, it's the same thing with that park, if that was originally supposed to be needed, re-plantate the armory.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, everything, build this new visitor center and completely away from the main theme of what the conceptual.
Right. And we had to request an amendment on that, which the state approved, but we, uh, that, that took a little time, just because I don't think they were understanding the concept of that and, and the change at the state.
They weren't listening to us about what we wanted. So yeah, that, uh, we've already got public pushback on that. I certainly remember the loss of green space when actually we're picking up green space.
Yeah, yeah.
We just, I don't think we need American Structure Point delivering that message, I think we should work that message to the park.
Right.
So we don't have an architect getting carried. I've gotten phone calls too, uh, I'm sure it's in MS also, I think. Phone calls I've received probably coming from the same people that are calling Jack. I think the confusion point was, they still, they still think that the farmer's market is still on the backside of the armory. Which is not, which they're worried about losing green space back there. They're worried about the parking along the, uh, yeah, along the, uh, Octantique. Two lanes are parallel parking going in that way, taking away spots. They're concerned about the visitor center. What's the visitor center initially was, the concept was it would be in the armory. The armory could never accommodate it. We've been in that building, Jack had plans of putting, I think, the offices in it, currently as the farmer's mayor there. Downstairs, there's nothing that can be done in there. So, uh, money is stealing the, the visitor centers, uh, money separate from the Appalachian Nation. So I think some people who never saw the conceptual drawings, which Devin has had, open houses, and people could come in and see this. Now they're seeing what's going to happen, they're not happy because they don't feel like they were involved in the process. And, uh, people had all the opportunities to come, it was going to take place. Shame on you if you're not there.
Right.
But now shame on us because they think we're sneaking something through and it's not, something's being stuck through. It's a great location for people to come, be picked up if they want to go to the sites, the World Heritage Sites.
Right.
Buses where they can pull in, pull out, take them anywhere they want to go and come back. Hopefully that's, that's one of the, the things that will grow out of this.
Yeah, and I think, uh, I was on the Chillicothe, I made a call last week, and I don't think anything's in stone other than the campus concept. But I mean, as far as the, uh, fish fry thing, I, that's talked about, but I don't think there's been any final decision. So I, I think people may be hearing things that's been discussed, but I don't know that anything's final. In fact, Structure Point was talking about the downstairs of the armory, and they were saying, you can have this, you can have that. And, um, just remembering what the mayor put in his letter to the state of how they envisioned using the armory with the visitor center coming out. What Structure Point was showing to me did not match his letter, and he kind of made that comment, he goes, we'll look this over and kind of assess how it fits with our letter we wrote to the state, which is a nice place, and I'm probably going to make some suggested changes to what's come up.
So I think he, I think he still put some orders down there and some shells, but I, I don't know what else. Uh, I would be amazed, uh, a year ago or a year and a half ago, we all got together and went through the armory, and I said, all I want to see is some, some conceptual drawings of what this, what this could be down here.
Could look like.
And, uh, and, and that never, ever came to fruition, so. I think it's a good plan what they have set up right now. The campus style right there with the armory, the World Air Beach and the farmer's market. People are asking now, why a farmer's market? Because, you know, produce is only produced in the spring and the summer. They don't know why they have to have one in the winter time. I, I can't answer those questions.
From what I saw on that, that's called the pavilion, so it would serve as a farmer's market, but it would also be for I, other activities, other activities that you could clear out that. I don't know all the details, but I gathered it's a year-round opportunity to use that facility.
And then people are concerned about the parking, if you're going to have something like that, how, how people want to park to come to that event. And is that, is that going to take away from people walking down and enjoying the park, you know, it's just. And so progress is not a beautiful thing. That's, uh, you know, we're not going to make everybody happy, but, uh, I think we can clarify the bottom lines. So at least that it's something that we've all agreed upon, uh, how we would like to see it before we take it out in public. Because right now it's for all the life, so.
Because I tried to explain to him that it's, if, everything down there is not written in stone yet, or, I tried, I tried to explain to that. Farmer's market thing came up and they said, well, where are we going to park at? You know, what is this, in the winter, there's nothing going on in the winter time, so I go have farmer's market in the winter time, I tried to explain.
Right. If you look at this original concept of that application, that farmer's market is on the north side of the armory, so that green space is going to be unimpacted up there, so by moving where, uh, where they've got an alternative to the ground.
Well, somebody on the call said, uh, why don't you just give them the money back? I said, oh, that doesn't happen. I never give them money back.
Then they were worried about the, the fish staying, that's, that's happening down the hill, what your money makes will not, and they're worried about that, want to get out, I said. They were, nothing's written in stone yet, so.
And I think on that, that's going to take cooperation with that group, that's not just the city taking that decision on its own, that's, that's a cooperative effort. the city taking that decision all the time. That's, that's a cooperative effort.
That was, that was a trailer that was there while I was there and they wanted to put brick and mortar there. That was, that was an exercise. So yeah, it's going to be an exercise again.
Last time I was up there, I tried to buy that because I hadn't paid attention because I remember you mentioned that it was, you know, speak of building. I didn't even pay attention to what was it before, at any time when I've been over at the park. We'll keep uh, keep it moving and uh, do our best. I think the city's going to have to do the massage, you know, get everybody, you know, just get on the right track. Yeah. But yeah, I don't think anything's final. So uh,
It'll, it'll have to become final.
It will be have to become final, so.
We can't, we can't speak on behalf of the city.
Right.
They're going to have to fight their own battles.
Correct. I agree.
We'll help them any way we can.
Mm-hmm.
And we are sharing updates on the planning and development website. There's a ACGP link. So Anna, so any community member, anybody can go to our website and then click on that link and you'll see a overview of each project. It's a map. It's really nice. You can click on it. You'll see visuals, some of those um, conceptual designs. And as we, as we move our design along, um, those will change also. We'll update with new, with new drawings and renderings. But then also has a monthly update reports that we send to the state. So there's a lot of information there that anybody can go look at at any time.
We put that on the, is there a way to communicate with people that might be watching Brad? That website out there for chat logs or?
Yeah, we had a link for, we did, put it up there and share it, you know, the live stream and that.
Let's do that.
Can you go link that off topic again? Oh, it's on your site?
Yeah, it's on our site.
Well, I'm also afraid to be on the, Kim, I want to say that uh, I, I think you're a true asset to the county. Uh, when it comes down to writing grants and helping everybody. And you uh, as, as appreciated by commissioners.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
John, we're table to death that you're on board. Uh, I know what your performance was and so. Place down south and I know that you're doing a great job here and I appreciate you being here.
I appreciate you guys' trust in me. It's enjoyable. It's uh, it's a lot of projects, but unlike my old job, I don't have to switch here. Like you guys have to switch from dolls to building uh, permits. I don't have to do all that. It's all ACGP. It's kind of a welcome thing. It's just one, one focus. Yeah.
And like, again, thanks, John, for being here. I'd like to thank everybody. Uh, saying this will be my last staff meeting with you. I truly appreciate everything that you do over the past eight years. It's been, it's been a joy to work with you. Uh, I appreciate, appreciate the opportunity and I wish you well in the future. As you will, you'll probably see in your lifetime, different commissioners come and go. But uh, hopefully, hopefully they stay around for a long time and you have uh, some uh, unity and uh, but I do appreciate everything that you've done. So.
Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate you coming in. Andy, thank you.
So right now we're sharing that to anyone in the live stream so they can see that data on their screen, your live stream now. I'll put it later in my description. It'll be on second floor. Also, I can go ahead and click on it. They work pushing it more. Yeah, I bet you hold it. I'm afraid that they may outlead you guys or a whole number of lives. They're sending it out to four hundred participants. They might bring your four live viewers. It's like, yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out how you guys can all the information together.
There's some questions.
All right.
City guy. And I said, hey, maybe uh, you and I could get together.
Okay.
Be later, Jerry.
Yeah. That's the next step. Yeah. Yeah, they'll be, you know, it's all last week and uh,
Merry Christmas to you. Sure will see you. Yeah.
Yes.
Right, right. Kind of trying to be set up next chapter. Bills for the week. Like one million, one hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-four cents. Second. The now analysis, thirty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. Sorry. This is a commissioner's action report. Item one, Apple Fund contract. Yes, it's a Apple Fund contract, grant management software contract. Prosecutor has reviewed and admitted. At your request of approval, sign a tax contract.
A lot of cool stuff. Yeah, all the grants we got.
Yeah. Total contract cost eighty-six thousand five hundred dollars. So jacket.
All favor.
Aye.
Doctor Givens, are you?
Good. You've been a good boy Santa.
You're my inspiration. Uh, we'll do one more part of this to see your Ross County Planning Department memorandum. This is a twenty-twenty-two Water Protection Control Lung Fund, full sign of the tax order. Ohio Water Protection Control Lung Fund payment request. It's for seven thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. And it's for one fourteen West Main and Bainbridge. Number one Wallace Street and Bainbridge. Two twenty-five South Cory Street and Bainbridge. And the Board of Health Administration, distributed costs of nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Total of seven thousand six hundred and sixty dollars.
Certainly.
Second, all favor.
Aye.
Doctor Givens, we're going to get up.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, this is Ian Armisen. He's the program coordinator for the Hope Partnership Project. And we're here to ask for fiscal support for the Hope Partnership Project from the Ross County Commissioner. If we put in the ask, we want to give thanks in this time of Thanksgiving for the previous support that we've had in the past two years. It's been the central part of our operations. And we're currently supported by a federal grant from the Health Resources Services and Administration Agency. That grant ends in August and that, that grant is a significant support for, in a salary for uh, harm reduction vending machine supplies and other, uh, other programming that we've put on in the community. That will end um, in August, the term ends. It's a three-year, it's at the end of a three-year cycle. This is our third, this is our second HERSA grant that, that has supported um, ADNA in their efforts and in turn Hope Partnership Project in their efforts. So we're asking for a total of forty thousand dollars. And on our introductory letter, there is um, what we've accomplished in the past. And uh, yeah. Want to talk through some numbers that we've never been able to, to, to talk about before. On this page here. Top is twenty-twenty-three overdoses were three hundred and six with fifty fatalities. In twenty-twenty-four, the overdoses were two hundred and eleven with thirty-two fatalities. First time in a long, long time that we've had a significant drop like that. And that means that we need to keep doing what we're doing to help continue to make that number go lower. The, the, what can we attribute that drop to? Distribution of Narcan, availability of um, evidence-based treatment for opioid use disorder. And community support decreasing stigma, allowing people to access services more than they would have prior in, in prior years. That's, that's why we do what we do. Our mission, our mission is to end overdoses and not one more person has to die from an overdose. And uh, we're, we're making progress. The hard part about it is we did, we know components of it, but how much of each component contributes? And we need to keep pressing on while we're still studying and using the data from across the country as to how do we narrow in our focus so that we can be um, more strategic and more effective. Another major component um, that we know happens with people who have opioid use disorder is they may get through treatment, but getting them to, to employment, to a job that sustains them, sustains their family, helps them get their driver's license back, helps them get their kids back, back to a normal life. That component is, is still shaky. It needs a better foundation. And that's going to be one of our focuses in our strategic planning process in twenty-four and twenty-five where we're reaching out to employers, providing assistance. The second big component to, sorry, one of the other major reasons why we've had success in Ross County is the presence of peer recovery supporters. People who have lived this life, who know how to talk to people who have lived this life, who, who can listen to them in a way that they wouldn't listen to me. I don't have that experience. So supporting the peer recovery supporter network is a crucial component. These folks are one to two, maybe three to five years out of addiction. And they're, they're working with people who are still in active use. And that, that drains you. And we want to provide a support network so that we're able to provide professional development. How do you talk to the public? How do you um, how do you uh, address a group of fraternal organizations? How do you support each other? How do you uh, rejuvenate? How do you take care of yourself? So that's going to be our second major uh, focus for our strategic planning coming up in twenty-four and twenty-five. We provided uh, forums to the community. The hard part with providing forums to the community is the community needs to come to those. Despite, and you may have seen it in the organizations that you may be with. We put out the word in all the channels that we could think of. We put on the presentation and there are two people there. So we've uh, we've recorded one, one session and put it on our website. And that was one that we thought we would have significant attendance. And that was how do you have a conversation with your children about using drugs? Because that's one of the most effective things to keep kids off of drugs is your parents talking about it. And our, our attendance was unfortunately low. But we're going to continue to work on ways. How do we get the message out? How do we get to kids and parents, mostly parents? Um, and that'll be another component of our strategic planning in twenty-four and twenty-five.
If I can interject for just a second. And doing a building project, unit sized schools, we had open forums for people to come in. And uh, we really publicize it. We pushed it out there when home kids, with, with kids in their hook bags and everything. We had two people show up. We had a huge crowd of teachers that already knew what the plan was. So it was pretty much preaching to the choir and not to the people who needed the help. Or what, they, they wanted to kind of have to the building service, why are you doing this? And I said, you had the opportunity to have spent foot on this before we ever did it. And you never came. I guess, I, I, this is maybe a stupid question. Does your organization work with Cardinal and Sabatza clinics and the, and this, and the shop down there on Second Street?
We do. So we, we don't provide services ourselves. We help to make sure that there are services available in our, in our county. So the providing peer recovery support, network support will be a service that we do provide. But otherwise, we're, we're helping to coordinate and link folks. Um, one of the things that I have to admit that we haven't done a very good job on, uh, because it's, it's a complicated issue is we want to be able to vouch for the treatment centers that are in our community to say, these are outstanding folks. This isn't a substitute pill mill with Sabatza. And getting, getting data from for-profit companies is a little hard. So we've, we've, actually we're, we're working on a survey for the jail project where we're, we're going to make sure that we navigate people out of jail who are, who have substance use disorder. And I'm thinking of that as a way to start the data collection process. Like how many days out do you have an open appointment if somebody were to leave jail? Can you see them that day? So we're going to, we're going to kind of get it from a, a different perspective. But we still have that objective of trying to, trying to say the folks that are in our community are quality people. Because we don't want somebody coming in and making it more difficult for us in our community to get recovery.
Well, I didn't mean to stop you. You're on a roll when I did.
That's okay. But you, you understand the difference. You know, we, we think, you know, check, 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 check. We got all the, all of the channels covered. So we'll just keep doing it and keep trying new things till, till we get some resonance.
A little piece of data that I wanted to mention that just came to mind um, with the harm reduction vending machines. They turned a year old in November. And a part of that process is connecting the individual registering for the machine to a peer recovery supporter because that's part of the harm reduction model. And we've had almost two hundred and ninety-three register for the machine and over seventy that have gotten in contact with a peer recovery supporter to start that journey and connection to treatment. So I think that's a pretty remarkable number in my eyes to see that for our community and connecting us people to help.
I, I think the thing that uh, I don't want to put this. It's hard for me to believe we have a drug problem in Chillicothe, Ross County. I don't see that. It's on my circle. And there are some people who may be in my circle that are doing it. I don't know. And uh, when I, when I think of three hundred and six people overdosing last year. And so for two hundred and eleven this year. It seems uh, incomprehensible to me that it's happening, but it's happening nationwide. It's not just a, a, a problem here, which it is a problem. Because we're just a small old community that you would hope that this problem wouldn't be happening. It's, it's great that you're here to help guide people who are having problems and get help.
And we're part of the post overdose response team as well. We meet with the health district every week on Wednesday to review that Wednesday to Wednesday um, overdoses. And then we go out and help meet with those people with the peer recovery supporter law enforcement. I sometimes go myself as well to have, try to connect those people to help and show them the resources that are out there. So we see it every week, the amount of overdoses and overdose fatalities that are occurring.
Our objective is any, any touch that we have is a. Our objective is any, any touch that we have is a channel for for support and recovery. So it's not just we're going to go out and, you know, give a talk. We're going to have materials, we're going to have peer recovery supporter contact information. Somebody says, I need help, we have the resource right there.
Well, if you're losing that in August, you can look any other place.
Of course. So we have, we can get a small grant from the Jellicoe and Ross Community Foundation. We will continue to monitor grants that are available. So even though that HERSA grant ends in August, we'll still be looking for other grants specifically around harm reduction, specifically around employer, employer support for people in recovery. We wouldn't be doing that alone. We would do that with Job and Family Services, Recovery Ohio, et cetera.
So Jellicoe also donate to this project?
Yes, they do. We asked for the similar amount from them and it's in committee currently.
Sounds good.
Congratulations.
I'd just like to add, and I have to abstain from this because I'm the vice president. But I I have insight into this that isn't generally known. These two people are too modest to take stock for. What you didn't see on the stats was the nineteen, the twenty twenty-two overdoses. And there were eighty four deaths, sorry. So this is a trend, three, three points is a trend. And we also had the jobs banking services meetings and turnover and HR there with people and jobs they can't win. And this is a similar kind of work where now it's appearing, it's a job that can't win because progress is being made. So focusing on this and currently this year, we're putting a strategic plan together of a brand new strategic plan that really goes out into the community a little deeper and really starts leveraging some things that are working and maybe doing away with some things that are working. But these are logical, strategic, and, you know, incremental steps that are going to continue to produce good results. So, you know, in my mind, it's money well spent. Invest in this and especially in place of federal money that's going away, which we're going to see, be seeing more of down the way. So to keep this trend rolling, they don't, they shouldn't be disowned because they're really making a difference.
Thank you.
I expect nothing else.
Thank you.
Well, we will take this.
As always, we won't give up.
I kind of figured that. I knew you wouldn't go do it.
We won't give up.
Well, and Doc, when it comes around our budgeting time, which is coming real soon, this will be considered at that time.
Okay, thank you. And I could offer some, P O P settlement funds would be a great bucket for this to come out of, if there's money available.
Well, you know, that's, that's, we're wish looking.
Yeah.
To put, put money and drug-related incidents. So that's a nice, it's a, it's not a nice bucket, but there is a bucket of money there.
And and this mission fits with with the mission of that that bucket. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Give those to Kathy if you want to. And congratulations on your returns again.
I want to talk to you in just one minute.
Sure. I want to share. It was either good or bad.
Did you go to the football game Sunday?
I did not. No, but I was stooping and hollering.
I kind of figured that.
I was stooping and hollering.
I'm going to share this one up there, please. It's crazy.
Yeah, I'm going to share it. Yeah, I think we did.
Thank you, guys. Happy Merry Christmas.
See you later, sweetie. So yeah, I got a granddaughter that decided, she's six years old, not she's, no. She decided that she's gonna take the terrible towel. Not mine, I'm sure not.
I was thinking, man, I'm saying, you be a Pittsburgh fan and say, dad, you ain't gonna be no Pittsburgh fan of mine out.
I mean, the fan, he is a fan of the pass on to your children about just below their living.
Yeah.
Who's killed, isn't it? That counts? See you.
Good to see you.
Yeah, thank you. Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
This is Ross County requesting appropriations of funds from the Ross County auditor. Increase appropriations to cover the cost of the twenty twenty-five year workers' compensation premiums, thirty-three thousand dollars. That will be coming from a group insurance workers' comp fund. So. This is a request for appropriation of funds from the juvenile probate court. Increase appropriations to pay invoices for guardianship services. This will come from the indigent guardianship defense fund. Probate court guardianship services, twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Good night.
All in favor? This is a request for appropriation of funds from the Ross County auditor for the public defenders of, from the public defender's office. Increase appropriations to cover the cost, increase new fiscal year twenty-five public defender contract.
Is that, was that Grant?
Grant will grow with the scan. And this is a new, this is the new public defender's contract.
For twenty twenty-five.
This is an application for the Ross County Commissioners for appropriation of ten meeting and convention, zero cost to the county. Plus for Ohio seven EMA Southeast, South Central Sector Meeting, Perry County E O C. December the ninth, twenty twenty-four, G two eight eight and G four eight nine training, December the twelfth, thirteenth, twenty twenty-four at Perry County E O C. This is for Mark Thompson.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye. It's going to be two days long.
Looks like.
One on the ninth.
Twenty thirteen, again, no cost, except for the mileage of the traffic. Brad, you usually do these requests for leave. Who's it for?
Mark Thompson.
Yes. Let's talk about the FBO at the airport for a second.
Okay.
What's your plan? You want me to put out a note? I, again, I want to talk out of turn, but I think that would be the perfect thing to do.
That's the same thing I do too, because I don't, I would like for us to pick our move.
You know, we can, we can ask for, we can, we can see what we get. I mean, it doesn't mean we have to change where we are now, but still have no communication to those guys.
Yeah, none whatsoever, because I was going to ask you.
I'm actually maybe talking to Jeff or Norman. I'm sure Jeff would call back and go, so here's where we are. You know, he is, he is busy. That's just, that's a brief call.
I know.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think Danny could be in a decision-making room about this by the end of the summer.
Okay.
How long does an R A Q set up?
It depends. I mean, we can do it for two weeks, three weeks. I think if we, if we put it on the Ohio Aviation Association's website, send it to them, have them put it on there. And plus, we, you know, the guys from Lancaster are interested. We know Dryden's interested. We'll send it to Duncan, too, so that we get him, and we've got something to look at.
Yeah, we need to manage the two guys out there right now. And I'm in order to call their anxiety, especially this time of year. I don't, I don't really see any way forward except for them being in those seats, no matter who you're talking to. You know, it's, I don't think someone comes up with the whole entire career.
Well, the only thing I, the only thing I'm thinking is, I don't know that Stan would stay if the fuel part of it had to leave.
That's up to him.
Right. Because that's really what he runs. I mean, they put him in charge of the airport to oversee, what's his name? So the guy's name.
Yeah.
Dan. Yeah. Overseeing him, basically. And he kind of does the grunt work at the airport. But Stan's kind of the brains and that's who they've kind of put in charge. But we were out there the other day and we noticed that they're, they're wearing shirts that say Duncan and T R M on, you know. So not only the fuel part, but running the airports, T R M. I did have, I did have somebody call and say that they had purchased a new bigger plane and asked about storing it in the hangar and they wouldn't let them do it. So the guy said, I'm leaving it going to Circleville.
We have people interested in building hangars out there right now. We have so much going on.
Other company that takes a week to talk to you.
And I don't think it's going to be growth out there, it's probably going to take two guys. We have to develop job descriptions and get responsibility figured out here. Because we've saw, we've always left that up to Jim.
It's always been Jim.
And now it's an R A Q. So we just need to grab hold of it.
Well, that's, I think if you get the right management team from the FBO.
Right.
Listening to what you guys want to do out there, that's going to be the difference. Because I don't think Duncan's listening.
No. They're just from the fuel plant. That's the only thing that they're, I I think that they're just fuel plant, that's all. But I don't know anything else.
I wouldn't have any, no, because they won't talk to you.
Yeah, because we are.
You know. That's not to weigh the relationship on me. I I think it's, again, this is how I perceive it. They just want to keep going like it was before. They don't want any changes. So just keep it status quo. And I if you're going to have a sewer system out there, benefit things about building some warehouses. There's going to be, should be a lot of growth taking place here on Stone Road. So I, you know, the one thing that I hear from everybody is we want to learn how to fly a plane. We don't want to go to Circleville, we don't want to go to Fayette County to learn how to do it. This is my, my backyard. So those are the things that we need to be offering, should be offering, should have been offering all for a long time here.
Yeah, it's not whatever.
I'll put something together.
Send in my spy out there, she's keeping an eye on it.
Is she?
Yeah. She sends me a message about it every other day or so. She tells me what's going on and take a photograph and video out of her windows.
Well, we had another pilot complain about one of the hangars out there didn't have a plane. It's full of stuff. So we went out, took pictures. Kathy's putting, putting the stuff together to send to them to say, you know, if you don't have a plane in there, you got to give up that hangar.
We'll meet with that group coming up here.
Did you put them, did you schedule somewhere to them?
I don't know. You're talking about.
Airport board, zoning boards on the other side.
I have not put them on schedule, no.
Yeah, I think we need to talk to them, just get their thoughts on what they'd like to see out there. So we have a consensus to go with the respective new FBO. And includes everything we've got on it, because that's going to be a decision on their end, whether they want to take the ground or not.
Did I, did I forward the airport report that O dot did, the annual report? Did I forward that to you guys? Get a chance to see that. So, you know, there's, there's some issues there where there are some trees on private property that don't meet the zoning code that you're going to have to either retalk or cut down completely. So that's something we'll be working on. I've, I've asked Stan Tech to get with us and identify those on a map so we know who to talk to. Some of the other smaller stuff that's there will be taken care of by our guys. There was pappies and reels are instruments on the runway that give pilots the idea how to land. When they get to the right elevation, the lights change the certain color. And that's how they know to bring their plane in. One of them had some growth around it, probably just grew up his wings at the end. They took a picture of it. I sent those guys out there the next day and they took care of that. And so otherwise.
A meatball on the aircraft there.
Meatball in there, exactly. But it's a, so we want to make sure we're. But everything else sounded good. Everything they had worked on this year, the new, new windsock, the airplane, the, all, all the ground, ground stuff was all newly painted and looked good. The beacon was working, but they said, couldn't see it because they were there in the daytime. It works, we know it works. But the reply, I thought the report was good, really. Let's switch from the airport to the courthouse restoration project. The C M R, uh, uh, comb bids, whatever, are, are due this Friday. So we'll have those, we'll have to put a committee together to review those and then pick a C M R. At the same time, we'll have the contract for the design services. We should have it this week. I talked to Rick Green last week, so we'll have that at the same time. Whole idea of hiring a C M R like you deserve from these guys that were in here is so they work together with the design team to put the project together the way it should be. So we pick a C M R at the same time that we hopefully school lead to do that work. That money in that project will have to be, will have to be set aside. You can't sign that contract without the money in the bank. So we'll have to get with Jeff and appropriate that money when we ready to sign the contract.
Well, that's a question. Brad, would it be kosher to have a school lead, look at these?
Absolutely. I think one of them should be on the committee one with review.
Sure. Because they may have worked with a group that was really good before and wants to do this project too.
Well, they did, they did send those requests for qualifications out, or C M Rs out to people that they had worked with before. There were some others that just called, I don't know if you've ever seen the durable company, durable slate, durable restoration. They're having, that's a lot of work around the country. They, that guy, owner of that company called and wanted the information. That's a, that's a good company. So there's, I think there'll be some really good ones there. Hopefully, we'll find out on Friday. Let's see, the one oh four sewer project. So that thing is moving along lightning fast. Everything has been surveyed twice. We contacted Glow Fiber, it used to be Horizon, and the Ross County Water Company to look at the layout of where this, where the sewer line is going to go so that we don't dig up anybody's water lines and we don't dig up any fiber optics stuff. Glow Fiber was great dating out there. They marked everything for us, had it done in three days after we asked. They were fantastic. Ross County Water didn't go out and market, but they did do an overlay of the drawings that they had with ours. And they've got some concerns. So we're meeting with them on Tuesday, I guess tomorrow. Yeah, we're meeting with them tomorrow to take a look at that and discuss. You know, they, they actually want us to move the water line to the other side of the road, which means that we have to bore under one oh four two more tons, which is a hundred grand every time you bore under that thing. So we're probably not going to want to move it. We're not going to want to talk to them about what we can do to make sure.
It'd be okay if we could move heights on the other side.
Yeah, right. That's part of the problem because it's on that side. Yeah, right. That's part of the problem because it's, it's on that side and that's, you know, when we're coming, we cross 104 at Stone Road and we come down that east side all the way till we get to Union Heights. And that's when we cross back over. So there's two crossings. The rest of it stays on that other side. So we have.
It's on the west side of 104?
It's the UNESCO site, pretty much.
Can you get to the wastewater treatment?
Well, there's a 36 inch line that runs from the park, Cam Shon's Park, that crosses over to there. We think we can dump that out. I dare not have to go under the highway again. So that, it doesn't make any sense for what they're asking right now. But that's a conversation we hope to have on Tuesday and see if we can work things out.
Is that part of the line for the VA?
It is.
That line comes from the inside of it?
It does. We'd like to catch it up farther if we can and we may be able to. But we're just unsure yet. Um, that's a piece they're still working on. We've met with landowners and started talking about easements. We need some temporary easements to bore under the road. So you got to be able to dig a hole, set that boring machine under so it can come up, come up on the other side. So, um, we've talked to a couple of landowners already. Um, then there's one permanent easement that we need right now that comes. So originally the plan was to run the gravity sewer line all the way from the airport down to Stone Road. But we want to pick up both of those, uh, package plants, one at Gleason's and one at Country Time. Country Time's pump station sits down off the road, almost to the bottom of the air, where the air, when you drive up 104 and you see that hill on the end of the runway that comes down, well, that package plant there is way down there on the bottom. Can't get that gravity line from there to get that stuff up there. There's no sense of pumping it back up the hill. So we've talked to the property owner there about an easement to go down the hill, pick up the package plant, go across the bottom of the airport property and then across to 104 where the line is. That's Mr. Wine Gardner and his family. We've talked to them and they seem supportive right now. Talked to him twice, um, giving him documents and stuff and, and I think we're, I think we're closer. That's, that's really the biggest property owner piece that we need right there.
So it's going to come, it's going to come through, uh, the old Cook Trailer Park?
Yeah, it'll, it'll go from, yeah, from the top of Stone Road and go down to Cook Trailer Park to where their, to where their plan is. We will have already picked up a decent, come down, it'll go down, they'll pick up that package plant, get rid of it. So that demo will be included in the project to get rid of that.
On what side will the, will the piping be on, starting at the airport?
It'll be, it'll be, I believe it's on the west side of Stone Road.
So it'll be on the other side?
Yeah.
And the four hundred to come?
That's nothing, Colby. You probably cut that. You may not have to bore that. You probably cut that and just patch it back. So where, we had originally wanted to put a lift station there on that property. You know how when you come up Stone Road and you come up that grade and then at the top of the grade you got the trailer park?
Right.
Well, we wanted to put it right there at the top of that grade. But talking to the property owner, if you remember right, some of that property that he owns is in the runway protection zone of the airport, which means he can't build on it.
Right.
So the piece that, the piece that's most important to him, where he can build on, is the piece where we wanted to set that, that station. And he said, no, I don't, I, you know, I don't want to give you that. I don't want to give you that because I need that for what I'm planning on doing. So that's why when we looked at it, we didn't want to not pick up that trailer park because that's, that's a big part of what the EPA wants us to do is to close down these other small ones. If we don't pick that one up, that hurts our chances for that water pollution load, load front brand. So just by turning, I mean, we would have gone down the road all the way to, you know, 104. We're just making a different cut to get to the same place. So we should pick up that plant. Does that make sense?
Because we was, because I knew we was going to get a stone road and 104, one there. But that's part of the flood plain.
So that's why, that's why we wanted to move it up the hill was to get it out of the flood plain. So that, that, that project is, the team we have on that are really good. Katie and Bill Johngrass are doing great work there. You'll see him at the convention. He's still be there. You could have come to. And we are, we are scheduled next week, next week to meet with, uh, on the 10th, to meet with the Pleasant Valley Regional Sewer District to talk to them about either maintaining the line or taking ownership of the line once it's built or whatever. So that's the next big meeting.
That's, that can't come soon enough because we're not the sewer business, right? I don't want to be in the sewer business.
No.
I think you were having trouble getting hold of them before or getting an agent from them?
Well, we've, we've had Charlie, uh, Chair and, and the supervisor for the plant. We've met now twice and talked about stuff, but they wants to go in front of the board. So, uh, the MS guys are coming down. Hopefully we'll have a good presentation to share with them, what we're, what we're talking about. You know, for them, I think it's going to be about numbers and customers. If, if they can pick up more customers, which generates more revenue for them, it makes sense. But we also have to look at what's going to cost operating for them. The big deal is that they won't be treating the sewage because they're going to be getting treated there. But then you got to pay for that treatment too. So that's one of the things that MS has been working on is a, a good setting numbers to show, you know, what the possibilities are, what the possibilities in the future are. We've identified, Tammy, Leonardo and Devon worked with us to, to identify sites that could be possible, um, development sites in the future, um, whether it's residential or commercial, even around the airport. And you start looking at that, you start looking at the numbers those generate, there's a good possibility that there could be a real boom for them to play taking over.
Yeah. To me, that can't happen soon enough because if there's any questions in the site plans and the specifications and the dynamics of the projects, and it comes to a pinch point for them later on where it's a performance issue. Nobody likes taking over somebody else's problems when they could have had a say in it.
Right.
And I think they need to be included in those places.
Well, in, in part, yeah. And you're exactly right. And, and that's why we're doing it now. I mean, we're not to the 60% sign yet anyway. So it's still important for them to, to, at least to hear what they have to say. The two folks that came in seemed positive, but they need a little more information. So I think we have, we have a chance to really present something good to them. The other thing is, is as we build these lift stations, we want to use the same, the same products that they have. You know, that we have the same pumps, we have the same fillers, we have all the same stuff that they're operating in their lift stations now. One of the other things that they, they talked about was that they have a package plant that's out off of like, I want to say Clinton Road. It's at the back. Can't really, it's close to where your farm is actually, I think. It's a little subdivision up there. And they were asking about hooking.
Oh, there, there's, there's a plant right there at the Chris Paul Trailer Park.
Well, there's that one, but there's another one too.
I think it's off the Anderson Station.
I can't remember what the name of it is, but they talked about, you know, would there be a way to tie that in? Well, there would be eventually. I mean, not in this project. Let's get, let's get the base built and then they can start looking at all these other things get tied into. That's why we've got to make sure we build it for the future too. Can't build it too big because if you build the pipe too big, then the stuff lays in there and gets septic. And we've been, we've been talking about chemical additions to this, which we've already, we've already decided we need to do. Pumping this stuff eight and a half miles, you know, so you got to make sure. I'm, I'm really pleased with the engineering that they're doing. I mean, they really are a shocking company. They've done this a lot. They've carried all over the state. They're really good. So.
I'll stop you right there.
Yeah.
I appreciate everything you said so far, but we're about 20 minutes behind. I'm sorry, 10 minutes behind on PD.
Well, shut up, Brad.
Talk about some other stuff.
I'll be sure when I give these to you here, I'll tell you. Come on in, folks.
We'll really be behind then. Once I get that.
Do we have a bunch of cattle?
I mean, you should have. I think last week and they come.
What are you doing?
I've got one here.
Morning, how are you?
Good morning. I'm doing well.
Hi, who just walked in? Jared?
My goodness.
How are you?
Good, yeah. I like the beard.
That's. There'll be a ceremony in January the first where it gets shaved off.
Will you be Facebook Live in it?
No.
No?
I'm going to be live on YouTube.
Understandable, understandable.
Well, we're good to go. I'll start over, run over a little bit.
No problem.
Jared, you want to kick this off or how you want to do it?
Sure. Um, plus review, uh, the big development for us is that the, it was mentioned a little bit in last, last year's meeting that we had with you. Uh, the, the statewide, uh, the biennial budget that was passed two years ago, the increases that came along with service providers that we share with, we share those expenses with the state, those events staggered and, and put in every half year. So we're right now experiencing the full effect of those and, uh, that's the, that's the big increase for us. For example, our final invoice that we get from the state, which comes in the summer, last year that final invoice was 276,000 and this year it was 958,000.
Oh, good.
So it went up by almost, up by almost 700,000. So basically what we're, what we're looking at is, and this was mentioned last year as well, is we, we have developed a healthy cash balance over the past four years. And that allows us to, uh, enter into a little bit of deficit spending and, and get that balance down some. Um, and we haven't gone for a levy since 2016 and we're, we're gonna, we're gonna use that balance to, to go into deficit spending for a couple of years without going out for a levy, but we're looking at probably going to want to.
I'm glad you did that.
Yeah.
It sort of, it sort of done well, that's.
In the meantime, uh, we're looking at ways to provide those waiver type services at more effective costs. And, um, we're, we're getting some of our other contract services down next year. So we're going to be constantly looking for ways to, to put that out for the new investments. Really, that's all, that's all I have. Um, we appreciate the insurance costs coming out from 17 to 8%.
We did that for you.
Thank you. That was the last thing I did before I finalized this fall budget was I, I had put that 17% increase in and I got to, I got to bring it down before I finalized it.
Well, I don't have any questions for you. I know that the job that you do is, is very much needed. I had the opportunity for years as a superintendent to work with the finance board. We always wanted to find her to take more students.
Yeah.
But I know when, when you get to maximum capacity, you can't take it. So at that point, you know, most schools just go ahead and take care of, uh, the need within. But you also provide, uh, Coach Blue talks highly of your organization.
You love Coach Blue?
He's, uh, he's Coach Blue. So helping them find, uh, residencies and jobs. And nobody knows how important that is. I appreciate that. I know we all appreciate the job that you do.
Thank you. Yeah. And a big reason for these, these state increases was that, that we were having a crisis with service providers. There's weren't, their, their wages were stagnant for a long time. So we had, all county boards were advocating for them to get an increase. And the way to get that done was to agree to take on some of that cost and we're, we're seeing that now, but we'll deal with it.
Well, sometimes you, you think the state doesn't give it enough.
And they did, they did give a lot. It's just we share that cost with them.
I have no questions. How about a percentage on the rate?
Sorry?
Percentage on the races for you guys?
Uh, we're, we're assuming that the counting will be 3% again. So I just plug, I, I plug 3%.
I just, so I wouldn't have to look at the numbers and.
Yeah.
Figure it out. Try to figure that out. That's the only thing I want to do. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
For that short old beard of yours.
Thanks for seeing us.
Appreciate you guys.
They're probably more enjoyable coming to see us than what it was for a time state.
Yeah, yeah. It's hard.
It'll get better.
You get in jail, you know. Got one guy got arrested. One guy got arrested on a football field. No, one of the, the guy who was just out on the field and he's causing problems. They arrested him.
Yeah.
Not for trespassing.
Yeah, well, he got punched by one of Michigan players. And there was, there was an Ohio State thing. He rushed the field on the wrong side of the field. And he got punched by one of Michigan, or Michigan player.
Don't figure out when I watch these games, when there's something upset, 100,000 people run out on the field. Do you arrest those people too?
No.
They threaten, they threaten you before it happens, but.
Yeah. No, they didn't make a threat on that one team that tore down the goalpost and carried it out.
I was daughter.
Fine.
2016, they rushed the field. But that was a double overtime game against Michigan. But that.
We had to rest the field a long time against Michigan.
Well, Arizona State.
I think that was the last time.
Arizona State last week rushed the field and started tearing the goalpost down and they put a second back on the clock. So they had to, had to get everybody off the field and they had to finish the game with the goalpost.
That's right. I was looking in the other night where there were eight overtimes.
I went to bed. I'm thinking, potentially, I went to bed and then I, next morning, I'm thinking.
What happened here? I don't remember what year it was, but, um, everybody rushed the field. We went down the field and the, and the police officers had surrounded both the goalposts. So they wouldn't tear them down. That's when it was grass turf.
So everybody just started taking.
They were taking chunks of grass and throwing it at them. I mean, they got, and then they finally just, all the cops just got off the field. They didn't tear the post down, but.
Was that the year? Was that the year you're talking about?
No, we saw, we had turf then, uh, but they did, I mean, you, you could tell when there's going to be a big rush. And that's when state highway patrol has a tight perimeter around those goalposts.
Yes.
That's kind of the only rule is.
Don't tear them down. Don't tear those down, yeah. But they won the national championship in 2002. Team.
Two, 2002.
I, we were the, I was at the Michigan game in 2002. That's when Ben Hartsaw was.
We led.
Yeah.
We were in C deck. When that game was over, it felt like a tremor. And the C deck was just shaking. I said, well, I don't know how sad you feel up here with this going, but they had the state patrol and it encompassed the goalpost. So you couldn't get to the goalpost.
That's feeling, I had this, that 2016 game, we were at the top of the south stands, the student section. You get that everyone jumping and missing during the kickoff. I was like, man, this stuff, I feel, I mean, we're, we're moving, you know, close to a foot. It felt like.
If you don't see OU, you don't have a problem down there.
Thanks a lot. I'll thank you for sharing your time.
Thank you.
Were you there Saturday, Brad?
I was, yeah. You wouldn't want to have been C decked on Saturday. It was so freaking.
I don't know.
And we, and we, and we tailgate, we tailgate, you know, so we'd get up there at seven o'clock. I mean, we had tents, we had tents and sides and stuff. We had the heater. I'm telling you what, eight hours of standing in that cold, cold body camp.
Baseball, yeah.
Burnt, windburnt, yeah.
I know this. I told this to Bill, which my brother graduated in communications from Ohio State University back many years ago. I said, I'm amazed in the fourth quarter with not, not much time left on the clock. The stands are still full. They were, they were, they were, they were praying for a miracle.
Yeah.
And when that boy broke off to the right hand side, the head tackle with the backfield, he picked up that, just eat up the clock. That was fun.
I thought, I was sitting there thinking, you let him score. Just let him run a touchdown and that, that. We ended up, we ended up, by the time we got the ball back with 40 seconds on the clock and there's not much time for anybody.
To do anything with 40 seconds.
You seem to be able to win a touchdown regardless.
Do things for.
We'd run the ball anyway.
Do things for.
We're running the ball anyway. It doesn't make it here.
You've got 30 seconds left. You're the running out patterns. You're making sure you get first down. You got to do one or the other. Because if you don't, but usually when a team has a minute, minute and a half, two minutes, it's amazing how they can move down the field so quick. But usually when the team has a minute, minute and a half, two minutes, it's amazing how they can move down the field so quick because everybody goes into a pre-ban. So it's, you know, you just chump down the field. It didn't happen.
I wonder if coaches are calling more, get out of there.
Yeah, it was bad.
Nothing even last season. Buffalo, you seen how it tore snowball. I went to Buffalo, I went to Buffalo at their old stadium.
Uh huh.
And there was thirty-two inches of snow on the ground. And they cleaned all the snow off the seats, but they put them where your feet was at, so you were sitting there with your knees in your chest. We was four rows from the Bills bench. People were throwing snowballs at us. We had clean, brown stuff all over. They were throwing snowballs at us. Uh, Jim Kelly was the quarterback. Bruce Smith was playing on defense. Jim Kelly turned around and looked at us and said, the next snowball comes over here, I'm coming across, snatching somebody. And we're going, it's not us. It's people behind throwing snowballs. They announced over the intercom and says, the next person caught throwing snowballs on the football field, get removed from the stadium. It looked like he was snowing snowballs. And it was like, it snowed, rained, slayed. It was freezing. The wind was blowing.
It never stopped last night, you know, kind of the whole game on that snow. They put out a, uh, to the Buffalo mafia, they would come and clean it all. Snow, they were paying twenty dollars an hour, get my meal, hot drink. I was watching the guy, he must have had two seats. He was cleaning his seats off, but throwing the snow on the seat that's like, you know. I don't know how that works, but apparently got paid and he got a meal and something to drink, so. Now it's, uh. And, and Buffalo said they've never had any intentions of canceling the post party in the beginning. Your man, they, they.
Well, Collinsworth last night said, well, they were staying downtown Philadelphia or wherever they were. That's where they were. Um, there was no snow, none at all. But as soon as you got up by the stadium, there was two, three-foot deal because of all that lake effect, right? Yeah.
I was traveling along projects.
What's that?
Trevor Lawrence, I'll see you.
I don't know. He got hit hard, didn't he?
Yeah.
He got waxed.
Yeah.
It was a cheap shot.
It looked bad.
Cheap shot, yeah. That was another Brown field, but it had, college had like four of them.
Everybody trying to plant those flags.
You gotta solve that. So, I mean, if you're watching on TV, because I've seen some clips, you would have thought it was not like it was overhyped. I'm telling you, an Ohio State alumni, sitting there watching Michigan try to plant a seat, a plant, a flag. While we're sitting currently on my house, I was, I was living. I wanted to run down there myself. I mean, they, they did the right thing.
It all started with Baker Mayfield, you know?
Well, I sat there in that stadium and watched Baker Mayfield do that.
Yeah, me too.
And I'm sorry, I could, it just gave me another reason not to like the Browns, because.
I, I could see the closest batch, elected commissioner arrested for rushing the field.
I would, that probably would earn me political points and maybe.
Well, you know what the Michigan people are saying? What the band did the week before in Indiana, did you see the band at halftime? What, were you there to that game? You know, so the band did this thing where they took the Michigan flag out there and it looked like animals were traveling. That's what got stirred up.
Well, then we did our little, then we did our happy kumbaya band shit, uh, halftime show.
Yeah.
And that was terrible.
Yeah.
I'm thinking, we're here during this week pretending to be friends with Michigan and then they all just, Ohio State fans, they march off the field. Not Saturday. They just, everybody, they finished their show and everybody just walked. They were just lost. I was like, man.
At the end of the game?
No, at the half.
Oh, I told.
They did a shared halftime show with the Michigan band and I was just.
The way the game was going, they were probably in shock. That's why they didn't.
Yeah, it was.
This is a, uh, our budget for twenty twenty-five. Uh, there is one mistake and it's on fifty, uh, seventy-one fifty-seven. Just mark, mark that one four off.
Trying to see if you paid attention.
Well, Kathy and Brad were working for that raise.
Always.
But, uh, this budget has been submitted to the auditor. Greg on the Catholic?
Yes.
Is the total correct on the, on the last page, uh?
Um, I believe so. So you need to take the four hundred thousand off of that.
It looks like from, from the current year to next year, there'll be a decrease of about three hundred thousand dollars.
I'm not sure what these are in the correct order, though. It's probably the first page, it's probably your total.
Okay.
Who is?
Okay. Got it. Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
Okay, so the, the last page is not the total.
No, no, here's the total.
Okay, I'm the first. Okay, because I was wondering.
I knew we did more than what we got here.
Yeah, I had to do something.
Kathy, I, Brad, I appreciate you guys doing this. This is something that's kind of like marriage to me, but on the seventy-three fifty-one crippled pound, I paid. We still have to give money to them, don't we? Is it required?
No, I don't know what it is even.
Well, I would, uh, go ahead and plug back in a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. There's some Ohio law school that says that the commissioner said, give them so much money, they're like, trouble Charlie.
How does that, how does that aid get dispersed? Does that go to juvenile?
Well, I, I, I think in the past, Tom knew exactly and probably Jeff knows exactly which direction that money's going, you know? If it's an organization that goes to the state to be allocated from that. I'm a lie.
I'm not, I wouldn't.
I think it really was, it stands out the nineteen fifties, back when there was polio and, you know, because it wouldn't be called that today now. Today it was considered offensive.
Too much. This business does.
Come on, get up.
I'm a dog. Yeah, they were one.
And I talked to a little bit about Kathy on the grants, uh, the grant, uh, for the Park District. I think they'd ask for additional one. This is on the last page. The Humane Society is still sixty thousand. And that is toward the five years toward the building of the new Humane Society.
It's a, that'll be the third year.
Third year, I think.
Five is the third year. How many years are you doing that?
Five.
Five.
Three hundred thousand.
Well, you asked about the Park District. Um, Miranda, in the budget I looked at, I didn't see a specific number she asked for because she put the same amount in there as last.
She did.
What we gave, so I don't know what she had asked me for.
Yeah, that must be it. If she put it in, I think, oh, she had to put that together quickly. Again, we pay that outside of sixty thousand dollars for the, uh, building of the new Humane Society over five years, we still pay them about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year of that.
Operating expenses.
Operating expenses and for housing, the dog wardens. So Brad, let's go back real quick. I sold over the district. I want, I sold the sewer project there, County Line Sewer. If, if, uh. Pleasant Valley takes that project over, let's say that they hypothetically, they take that over. They will take over in Heights too. So we would, uh, the commissioner said, no more.
No more building because the, I mean, the reason we have it is because of the plant.
Yeah.
You know, you put all that, you put all that in the lift station. It's getting treated down the road and somebody else, when you came in the lift station, there's no, there's no need for us to build anymore. That's, that building would probably change because Pleasant Valley Regional Sewer District does everything through, uh, the Ross County Water Department. So they look at the water bill and that's how they base their, that's how they base their rate. You know, we don't do that. We just never have.
We have a sixty.
That rate, yeah. For some people, that's probably good. For others, it's probably not.
Commissioner, here's a question. Don't be dove down after hearing the past.
Oh, uh, yep.
Sure. And is that due to, uh, I know they increased. Well, it's increase of the recycling, what? They impacted another dollar or something over that. But I don't know what it is. It just seems like mine has gone from seventy-some dollars to eighty dollars now.
Well, there's eight dollars are charged on the sewer bill because of that.
Building sewer. Now I, I feel better about bank debt.
You can flush with the.
Thanks. Well, I could tell a little story, but.
Well, that's, um. I don't have a sewer deal.
I know you don't. I'm happy for you.
Because about, about every five years, close to about, it's sixty, seventy-five dollars.
Yeah.
Every twenty years or.
I just got.
Page two here under the airport, we're gonna figure out how the life obstruction revenue expands.
I'll dig into that, uh, into that, uh, RFP that we jotted from the other, from the other county and see what kind of stuff they put in it. Because I haven't really looked at it hard until you guys decided to do it. So I'll do that. And I'm also hoping to get the RFP out this week for, uh, for the cleaning services at the service center. So we can match it up to what we had.
Figure out our contributions into that. So if we're trying to, kind of race, kind of charge on top of their final license fee.
Right.
So we can make a look at the money on that.
Well, the other, the other thing is, you know, when they ask that day, what's first thing you do is put in that, put in that forty-four X white card. That's not happening.
No. Let's go back to the service center for a second.
Good.
The, the, the company is running it now, so put in another contract, put in.
No, that's first capital they've done.
They've done.
They've done. And their contract ends in March, but I was really hoping to have somebody picked out before that. Because we're not getting much service there now.
Correct.
We're getting quotes in right now.
We're getting quotes in.
Not yet. Yeah, we're gonna do that now. That's what the RFP for that. Because that's a, you know, if you look at the numbers right now, that's, that's gotta be a bitted, a bitted service, I believe. Because it's paying two hundred thousand dollars or more. The service right now is rude, you know, in terms of.
Kind of.
And, and, yeah, they're, they're an agency that there's no tax and all that stuff, you know, and they're, back in the day, there was, there is a mandate to use those shelter workshops if they have one in your community. And that's why we always use them. Uh, this has been the first time since I've been here that we've actually come out to bid for new services.
Wasn't gonna try that last year, we was gonna.
We talked about it.
We talked about last year, but there was.
It's because of that rule.
Rule, wasn't it?
You know, we still thought, we thought we ought to do it just to look at the numbers.
Right.
To see if what we're getting is, I, I'm, I'm worried it'll only lie.
A two hundred thousand dollars of good, good services.
Walk through that building, that's a big building.
Well, I'm getting, I'm getting, how are you guys doing?
Good.
We're gonna wait about five minutes and I'm gonna cut you loose. How's that sound?
We're gonna wait for all the reporters to get their.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did you see, did you see him coming upstairs?
They were behind me.
Somebody get a hold of, shall we?
Who was that?
About what? I don't know. She sent an email.
Yeah, she wants to.
She wants to interview us. I'm thinking.
We got money to meet.
I sent her an email back that said the first budget hearing starts next week at ten, if she would like to come at that time.
Well, she, her thing is that she wants to, uh, with the end, the year ending, I am working on this, to recap some stories and hope to sit down with me, all right? And chat about what's gonna happen in the calendar of next year. I just, I think it was. Maybe I need to kind of bow like that, something like that.
Thank you.
Yeah, can I answer real quick? Where things are doing, what are they doing? Yeah, they're shocked. Both stats. They're paint bars all night. I was slapping, I'm taking their frames out. I'm putting all these slabs in and then paint bars.
That's on the outside.
The two, yeah, the two big, long, the two big.
Okay, the ones that face the alley and the other one that faces paint.
All right. That may certainly have been cracked for about a year. We're gonna dig into that. Maybe you want to go on the tree. Heat changers, what's your, the heat changer, this is, that's a place, extra place, just so we'll have backup at your chiller, at your air conditioning unit basement. The summer, the, the twenty-five Chevrolet truck, we'll buy a new one, take the old one out to the airport, right? That banging is done out there. We've got a, a sub block.
But, uh, and that truck accommodated some plates.
We'll make sure of that, yes.
We'll get a shit of it.
I don't know. Just, I will issue prices when, when I actually, I think they'll be more prices.
Well, he wants another Ram and he'll get a Ford F-150 or a two-fifty.
Two-fifty, yeah.
So Marauder doesn't count, I'll count it. They have bed cover and weather tech.
No, it's just.
Orwards.
It's actually.
I said the heck of a deal on that. Got that October from our wife.
The bomb cat, snow blader, we're all good. So we can use that at the airport. Same with that sweeper, that angle bearing. We can use a lot of it slipping on runways and a car max off on the bomb cat and then Ryan.
I'm sure they're nearly a sweep.
Yes, they do. Exactly, yeah. We'll use a lot more than we plan. That big snow pile will go on Ryan's flatbed truck, so we can have it, uh, we won't have to use the dump truck as much probably because it's trucks, you know? Try to keep that big truck out the runway like to a camp. General rehab is cleaning the well like we would do every four or five years. We can, take the booty, come in and does it, cleans it for about fourteen days straight.
Didn't want it not working or something?
We just gotta fix it. We have a pump, right? Now, the big one right there, the ground master, has a big enclosed tractor with fat wings. We're gonna try to sell a whole one.
Get you some of that.
That old one.
That one's just.
You just said in the meeting that all we trade for is one fifteen.
Oh, I don't get it. So we're here, it's already. Do you have Jager's quarter room, his carpet? I might have his carpet last year. Thank you, Danny. Thank you guys.
Say to Dana.
Say that.
Okay. Matthew, you awake?
Wide awake.
Wide awake. I'm only one of those, hell.
We just went through that. I don't want to go through it again.
You put some salt up to watch.
Oh, it's terrible to watch. It's cold and watch. It's cold, sit there, freeze your butt off to watch it.
I stopped there.
I thought about going to watch, uh, a Mule up in Detroit. They play, they play squeaky, but I don't know. I almost sit up. I know they probably.
It was frustrating walking up down the stairs, getting pets to come back upstairs watching.
I bet it was, but you wore.
Every time I'd be down, I'd tell him that, I'd help air Bill or Aaron or somebody. Wow! They said, that's the field goal. That's another field goal.
I, uh. Kickoff.
I did, it's kickoff for seasonal depression.
I did that. I did two basketball games that morning and got done at about twelve-thirty and people agreed with us, say, yeah, we'll have them screened in the lobby. Well, I never did. Every time there was a break in the game, I ran out. The screen wouldn't turn on, so that is. Got done and I was supposed to go to Gary King's, which we used to go out there and actually, I got home and about quarter one, I was kind of disappointed by me.
Well, the last thing I'll say about Ohio State.
Well, the last thing I'll say about Ohio State is everybody was complaining, including my brother, that they thought that that game should be played at night. That should be it. Well, I'm glad it wasn't played at night.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, it wouldn't, probably midnight by, if they would shut up and played it. It didn't do very well.
Five noon, five noon games in a row is way too many.
Yeah.
Way too many. They had the one night game against, what, Western Kentucky or something like that. They had, it's tough to remember. One or two. I think there was one, one three thirty, one two three thirty game. I'm not even sure that the rest of them.
Akron and Marshall were three thirty games. Which.
You know, Mike, even in three thirty games, you gotta get your seven o'clock.
Yeah.
You like the three thirty games?
I like the three thirty. But to go, especially to get to.
Yeah.
Not there, so.
Let's go.
You can tell.
That's how I can talk to me.
For this game. I think it needs a big name for that.
Yeah, that's fine. We have, uh, we're currently under contract with Axon for body worn cameras. It's up for renewal in January, January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Back in February of this year, uh, reached out to them to start the renewal process. We did the contract and everything. Got quotes from them, um, ones for very large. They doubled, more than doubled in price, uh, for a five-year contract. After talking with them for several months and, uh, we decided that we needed to look for another vendor or other vendors to see what was out there. And Motorola is the other company that offers the suite, uh, for body worn cameras that includes the cameras, all the accessories, the management systems, the storage, things like that. Uh, Motorola provided us with a quote. Um, that quote was, uh, half of what the Axon quote was. Uh, included more equipment, unlimited storage, um, some improved redaction software. And so what we're looking to do is we're looking to switch vendors on the Motorola, Motorola body worn cameras to Motorola. The two seventy-one? Is that the two seventy-one? The two seventy-one, yes. Um, that's for a five-year contract.
Okay.
Um, there is the way.
That's not two hundred and seventy-one thousand for five years, is it?
Over five years.
Over the five years period.
It's, it's a total.
Two seventy-one. A total of like two seventy-one.
Okay.
Over the five years.
Okay.
Um, the way that it is broken down, we would have an upfront cost of eighty thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty cents. That includes equipment in our first year of the contract. The, after the subsequent years, two through five, um, are forty-seven thousand four hundred dollars per year. That is for, basically, it's a renewal program wherein year three, the body cameras will be replaced. It includes the unlimited storage, the management software and, um, and the redaction software. The, it will provide us with eighty body worn cameras, um, which our road patrol, our transport staff and our jail staff wear currently. And then anytime it recovers a full warranty on everything, if there's something wrong with the camera, they send a replacement. Um, for those that's ever in year three and at the end of the year, at the end of the contract, we get new equipment. We have, uh, already in our submitted budget, we have included the numbers to cover the cost of year one and the subsequent years. Based on, at the time that we had to submit it, is based on the Axon quotes. Here's a large amount of money that, um, is budgeted, we submitted with our budget, um, to cover the costs that we thought.
It's a six hundred thousand.
This is much less.
Five years.
And after telling Axon that we're looking at another vendor, they came down, I said, basically on their quote, but they still wouldn't meet mother all the prices. One thing we've been trying to do at the sheriff's office, that's very, very competitive in our pricing, because we know that we are a great cost on account. So that being said, we've also applied for, to Governor Dewine's office. There's also a great asset natural body worn cameras. Ross County was one of the first agencies to go to it. And it's been very helpful in the things that take place and anymore, if you go to court without a body worn camera, if you don't have body footage, what happened? They, they think you're lying and the case is for adapt. If you don't have body camera, it's for adapt. Now, we are still one of the few, but the other ones are getting there, uh, correction divisions that wear body worn camera. But I'll tell you, a lot of stuff happens in correction settings where when people are going around, they have those cameras and that footage has helped us in some of our ball suits. Suicide and stuff like that, where I was in there, where you can sit down, write on papers, I mean, it was in there. When you show a body worn camera that you were in there, actual footage in there, it, it makes a difference in those cases, so.
Why don't you, who's, uh, moved away from a local agency to an agency, I think, in Dayton, which is cheaper for the county? I appreciate you investigating to make sure that there's, uh, another boat that, that does the same job, a cheaper amount, maybe runs better.
Well, it's just like Axon's led this, same with the tape. You're aware of the tape. They got the market on tagers and they keep upping every year. It keeps going up every five years when we go to renew things. It, it went up, up, up. And, you know, we just got, we're just getting hammered and we just said, there's gotta be an alternative solution. We're still looking for tager, but right now the tager market is kind of locked up by Axon. And they, again, they're, they're more dependable. We don't have many tagers as we do body worn cameras. So we're still looking at that contract too, so.
Listen, they like Columbus is using a lot of the pepper spray.
I took all of you. Have you tried one of these cameras now?
Yes, we, we've had for the past, uh, seventy days or so.
So you're getting that one now?
Yes, yes, we are.
And one thing, one thing different is, we all remember when Eric Tocster got shot by Thor. We just updated those cameras. And what happened, Eric didn't have his camera on, but when that gunshot went off, the camera activated and it went back to so long, so it captured all that. These cameras don't have that feature, but then looking at them, it goes back longer. So when something happened, that playback goes back longer.
Okay, so they didn't have the, the shot.
There's a, Axon has in beta testing gunshot detection. It just so happened that the day that Eric got shot, we had just issued him his new camera. And the gunshot detection worked. And that's why we were able to pick up the footage.
These long rollers on that.
These won't kick on. What they do is whenever, the camera is always recording. So limited people have the ability to go back to, into that recording and pick it up. So if there is an incident, the recording is still there and you can't get it out of it. Um, so it doesn't have the detection.
Feature is only in the different aspects of power.
Okay, so if something, something happens to this, we don't take him to Rita Cavan?
No. And it's.
Rita Cavill has, Motorola, B and C does not have anything to do with.
No, this is through, uh, Motorola Solutions, which is a Motorola company.
Okay.
They have a representative in Jackson, who is who we are dealing with. And this has, I've already, uh, prosecutor March, I'm working with prosecutor March, and he's already reviewed this and there is an email from him that, you know, that it has approved to do it to the fore. I saw the debit signed.
Yeah.
Well, my thing is, is just, we went away from B and C for the cruisers, but now we're going back to, I just didn't want us to go back to.
No, we're, we're, we're not going back to B and C. We were, we were just overpriced. So that's one reason we got away.
So this is all through Motorola themselves.
Yeah, we're seeing more and more of this all the time, where they put these numbers out there. And I want you to look at them. And then as soon as you say, hey, well, we're, we're gonna look somewhere else, all of a sudden the price goes right back.
Oh, that, that was amazing with that.
Yeah, they did it with the food service.
Well, another thing.
Happened over here.
Another thing, if you remember, we did this with, when we get medication all the time here locally, when we told them, well, these people got buyback programmed. If we don't use this medication, it's, and you know, this company came right and said, no, we'll do the same thing. And we got that buyback that, that saves us a lot of money in a year of time on this, on this.
I don't know what these companies are thinking, like, you're not gonna go out and look, you're just gonna take that.
Well, you take that, I wouldn't want you to go.
Yeah, well.
A lot of people don't. I mean, a lot of government agencies, they spend, you know, I've always tried to be, reform our spending with this office. So we, we research, we continue to research and we will continue to research. Because when you have a plan and you buy the stuff, then they want, it's just like our computers, software will, you have to have so many licenses, you have to have all this, you know, protection, you have to have all the, it, it's ridiculous. They got you, you know, they got you under their doubles and, and just keep raising the price on you, so.
But, but the one thing I want to, I want, this is, this has been something that's gone wrong for years. Let's say that George came in today, he can't do this, but put on, hypothetically, you say, I want eighty thousand dollars a year. Maybe seventy-two, but I want eighty thousand dollars. We seen that. So you leave and all of a sudden you put out some feelers and somebody offered you a job at eighty, eighty thousand dollars a year. You come back in, turn your letter of resignation in, and the first thing we will do is what? And we'll get you eighty-two to stay. Now, if anybody had any sense in their head, they'd say, no, I don't want the eighty-two. Because if you can pay me eighty-two now, why don't you pay me eighty-two back here? I've got two or three years of, I should have committed an ass for a long time ago, so I can start playing this game. Finding somebody that says, I'll give you this. Well, that's the same thing with, with what they're doing here. We're gonna throw this out, we're gonna cast it out so it wouldn't catch. And, and with our arms that, not open my mouth, it's not the bait that I want. I want something else that's a little bit cheaper, so.
Well, you know, me and you, you always had this thing, every time we come over here, it's, well, you need more money. I start to pay for every dollar I can, but, you know, I also respect you guys in the aspect when I need some. It's a two-way street and, and it's been that way. Also, again, to the governor's officer, Grant, we're hoping to get fifty thousand to even offset this cost of more in that first year.
All right. And I didn't.
What you didn't talk about that.
Well, the, the grant writer, she first.
Yeah.
Worked with that.
Yeah.
She first.
Talk about that.
That'll help in this first year.
We haven't seen when that's coming out. If you hear anything at the convention, you're gonna listen. As you remember, they said December.
Yeah.
That's CCA grant for the, for the sheriff's departments.
Yeah.
I have that, but it doesn't say when. It doesn't say, you know, how they're gonna do that. Cause you definitely need that for the loss.
Yeah.
I'm saying, do you have any questions for?
Yeah, Axon, Axon is who we're using right now?
That's who we're currently using.
What was their, what was their bid?
The last one we got from them, I'm giving the first, you know, what it went well. The first one we got with them, with them was a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year.
One, five years?
Years, yes.
For the five years, so that was.
That was six hundred.
Five, yeah, six hundred.
Hundred thousand dollars.
And then the latest one they gave us was, uh, ninety-two thousand dollars a year. A total of four hundred and seven.
Motorola's gonna, I don't know. Two seventy.
Two seventy-one, yes.
You have any other questions?
No.
So Jeff marked out this contract.
Jeff took a look at it. He said, he took, I could look at it this afternoon and everything looks good.
Okay. So then.
Sir. Favor.
Aye.
So I may have one more minute of your time. I see where we picked a contractor for the jail. Will that pay, that grant, will that pay everything or do we have to subsidize that?
Right now it's, uh, uh, their, their bid was, uh, one million four hundred and four thousand dollars. And we have one point six million dollars, so.
But there was also an add-on. What's that add-on?
Well, it wasn't an add-on, it was a deduct, actually.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah.
So wide enough to cover that?
Well, we hope so. We'll see. You know, if we get change orders, we get.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, we, they've done a really good job with this project, I think. So we'll see.
Okay.
We have, we have a letter, uh, a recommendation to, to award a contract. But I don't have the contract from the, uh, attorneys yet, so I don't wanna, I don't want to award it till I have the official writers, so they can sign it. Then we'll award it and then we'll have, we'll meet with them and talk to them about what we expect and have the contract signed. Help them start the game.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, thank you, guys.
Could I have a copy of that front sheet there? I need, I need to send that, I need to order the equipment. It'll be in all time. But that's the one that needs my email address.
Do you need his email address?
He's on the V A, anyway.
No, I, I, I have two tapes, I have two tapes.
Bryce Leach.
Uh huh.
You know, Bryce, his brother, both had a four tapes. He has four and his brother has four. The brother has decided he can't go anymore, so.
Are you planning?
Brian Collins. So I have two, he has two.
You got a ticket.
He sent a message.
Are you planning to, to, to celebrate some breakfast?
Bryce, he's still living, he has lived in Columbus. So I'll just back with you.
Great guy. I just.
Yeah.
Thank you, man. Very fortunate.
Yeah.
We'll see you guys.
I was looking at the November levels. It's fast.
Do you have anything else?
Yeah, I do. Um, let's see, so we went through, um, shore project, um, the jail project, like you just heard, we have a letter of recommendation from the, from the architect, but I won't wait on that. Um, until I have the contract for you guys to, you can sign both for a little bit, ready. Let's see, uh, service center, uh, the renovation of that public space areas. We met with Eric Parkoff last week, um, went through the drawings that he had, made sure he has all the pieces and parts where he wanted in there. Uh, started looking at, uh, colors. We don't, you guys approved at one time the colors that were submitted before.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think that's still kind of where we're leaning. We're not sure yet, as we get a little closer, we forget it, and let you guys review that. We are having a meeting with ESC, um, Job and Family Service and Andy, all the IT folks, so we can discuss what's needed in there. Because like now, you know, the ESC has a smart board boards in two of the rooms. Well, if the ESC isn't around and we won't use them, how do we, how, you know, everything in those rooms should, should be open to the people that use the rooms. So I want, I want to get all of them on the same page and then we'll give those to the architect and then he can see how we're gonna, how we're gonna put those together, so. I have more information on that, or hopefully we're meeting next week on that, um.
Is there anything with the board of elections that's gonna be part of that?
No, because they really don't use any of, you know, they just use the space. We've never had, uh, we've never had a request from them to have a meet. Now, they do have their volunteer meeting in there, but they don't ever use the video stuff, so. I mean, I can contact them, but they don't have an IT person.
Yeah.
Everything comes through the state for them. You know, Andy has worked, Andy has put some cameras out there for a system of their own.
Yeah, I remember I was, when I was on the board of elections, we had to, I think Kelly, you guys found some changes. We just, they, the Secretary of State was making a requirement for security on cameras and things like that.
Yeah. Andy's working with them on, on some of that, but that, all that money comes from the state and they, you know, they mandate what you have to do, so.
I was surprised.
Yeah. Uh, I told you about the clean RFP. Uh, Brad Winescript is no longer gonna be a, or a representative. Uh, I think the gentleman's name of one is Taylor.
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 Uh, and he's not gonna rent that space again. I guess he's gonna set up a bigger office in Ross County. Um, and he's got a plan, but they said they, they probably won't be using that space, so. That gentleman that was there, his last day was.
Kelly's taken.
Kelly's taken, going to be his.
Director.
Kelly Johnson's going to be his.
His rep.
Yeah, director for the district.
Okay.
I don't think Alex Hartvoll is going to be working anywhere.
Well, the young man that was working in the office said he thought there was a chance that some of those guys would go to work for him. But I, but I don't know.
I think Alex is for a while, but.
I'm asking you. You didn't think of us. I'm also trying to Teresa, you know, there's history there, Teresa knows. Brandon's secretary, a lot of, a lot of her connections, so. He'll be met, Brad will be missed.
Yeah.
But I, it'd be nice if Mr. Taylor were bringing back the, the ominous spell that what Charlie applied for the four million dollars for.
Yeah. Did that go away?
That's not going to go through the, before January the first or January the twentieth. That's a bummer.
And then the last thing, I met with Jan Corzon last week and I talked to Jack about it for the law library. Kind of solve what they really need and what they don't need and, you know, which books they, they want to make sure they have. It's really pretty much, and I think there's a way down there in that space to, to seal a piece of it off just for the law library and, and use the rest of the space for.
Use the rest of the acreage.
Yes.
So I guess my question on that, would somebody have to be there to manage that or?
You know, I asked him the same question. And he said, so he showed me like there's mountains of paperwork there that somebody is supposed to hand out to people if they have questions. Here's this paper for this, you know, if you're getting divorced, if you're trying to get a restraining order or whatever. But if they ask him any questions, they have to say, I'm not an attorney, so I can't really give you any advice. And you can take this and fill it out. I don't know why it's not online, maybe it is, I don't know. But that's, that's, that's what he said. And, because I said the same thing. I mean, you really don't have anybody in there now, do you really need somebody in there? I don't know, so.
I would venture to say you don't need me. If you're going to build a smaller space.
Well, here's what you could do if you've been in there. So you know, on the one end, you got, you got the conference room.
Correct.
Okay? And then the next room is the office. And then there's a space all the way to the wall where all those, all that paperwork is. You could put a floating wall, I, I want to say that, I want to say the depth of this office is, is ten feet. So if you added another ten feet on the front side with a floating wall that turned, you could still come in that door and go into the library space and then you could turn and go into what would be called the law library. You could build it in such a way where it wouldn't affect the entrance going in and out to the bigger space. And then you'd, you'd almost double the size. Because right now, you've got all those, you've got all the computers along that, the walls that face the, the office and the, and the conference room. So just build a wall behind that. And that gives you all that space, put books, put shelves down at one side, put all the books you need in there. You won't have to mess with the H V A C stuff because the way we looked at it, it's already set there and sprinklers are already set there. So if you put that floating wall up, you don't have to fix any of that stuff. You don't have to redo the H V A C, you don't have to redo the sprinkler system. And you, you've made a spot that's just, just for them and you still have all that other space to use it.
Yeah.
Or you take them out there altogether and you get a little office over in the photo block. That's, that's what we talked about for years was, I mean, we're running a space.
Give that whole area down to the basement, back to the church. Put it in the whole block or run fifteen feet.
Right.
Then there'll be more bicycles in there. Well, we talked about having an option, so.
Yeah. Oh, we're definitely going to sell, we gotta get it out of there.
Early sprinkling.
Let's see, what else do I have for you? Oh, because you signed something for the paint stadium, right?
Correct.
Okay, well, there's something else. Now they've got to get, now they've got to get permission from the V A. They sent this contract about the V A.
Oh, yeah.
And the V A lady is like, why do we have to sign on to it? So there's no, there's no proper signature block for him, so sent the stuff back up to the state this morning for them to do a new signature block and then once I get them to sign it, I'll bring it into you guys to sign it.
I don't say I, I.
This work contract, very happy.
Well, I don't blame it, but you know, it's not us.
No, I know. And that's, that's what he, you know, that's why I told him, I said, it's just the way it is, you know.
He was wanting to have it done.
Want to have it done now.
Yeah, he wants to have it done.
Well, he can save money. The contractor told him, if you can do it before the first of the year, you'll save thirty thousand dollars. Kind of like the same thing we just listened to.
Correct.
I mean, I don't know how that, how that changes that much. I can't believe the cost of that stuff is going up thirty three.
That can be labor, nobody wants to work in the spirit of time, that's going to be a time.
Well, this guy, he wanted to do it now, they wanted to do it now.
They want to do it now. I don't know what they're going to do with that wall.
Supposedly, you want to tear it down, they'll do it. They got Puma doing it.
Yeah, that's a million dollars. We got, what, five hundred thousand dollars and.
We ain't.
Our project's about a million bucks.
Yeah, I thought it was about a million dollars, but I'm talking about, you know. Wouldn't go. That wall is kind of bad.
I think eleven hundred and fifty, they're the wall, but sure.
I wouldn't a fan of the new picking table they put up. And the wooden tables are better.
Yeah, I agree.
The plastic tables.
Yeah, that's what Brian wanted.
What do they have wooden now?
No, he wanted, he wanted the plastic.
They had the last one. Said the last one.
They didn't last long. LA had two or three of them broken when I was out there last year. They just got them.
I remember that when he goes back and asks commissioners.
They want money for speaking.
My brother is a great surgeon. He's terrible at building homes. Shouldn't have never tried it. He's really good at baseball. He doesn't know anything else about this stuff, you know? I mean, that's what I kept trying to tell him about this, you're not going to get this money that fast. We'll try it.
Yeah.
But you're not going to get it.
He's a, he's a baseball guy.
He's a good baseball guy.
Brad?
Yes.
But he gets all the money.
He's going to get the money. He just got it.
But he wants it yesterday.
They say people now want ice cream.
Yeah. I wanted to ask on this, uh, I figured with that thing passed out, what's the two dollar increase on the maintenance?
I did not see that. That's, that was something Danny put together. I, he handled it to be.
Yeah, he put it inside. What's on there is two, two dollar increase, so. That's hard. That's just for the maintenance. That's, that's, he's looking bad at two dollars.
Instead of each of the maintenance guys, oh, the three percent were about like fifty nine cents. Somebody makes nineteen dollars a cent. That's why we want.
He looked at getting a few dollars to each one of the guys.
And you've done that in the past.
Yeah, we have.
You've done that.
Well, we did it when their salaries were fifteen dollars. Get them seventeen dollars. I, I, I talked to the commissioners before and told them how lucky. They know this, that you and Kathy are here. But we're super lucky, we had the maintenance crew, we got them, those guys busted. But I wouldn't want to come in here on Friday night or Saturday morning because somebody's fucked up the toilets, they're going to blow the lines out. So, but.
You know, when you look at this stuff, you know, for years, I mean, the guy that just passed that was custodian. If you look at what he was making, he was here thirty five years.
Yeah.
You know, three percent of nothing is nothing. Um, and they weren't making, I mean, what, what's he making when he passed?
I think he was making seventeen.
I was going to say, he makes seven, seven, less than eighteen dollars now.
I mean, county, county employees were never, were never paid, you know, it was, you had a good job, you had good insurance. You never worked any overtime, basically, you know, you had all seventeen holidays or whatever. And the previous auditor that was there for thirty years was, he was, he was very careful with the funds. He just didn't believe that, you know, that you should be paid a lot of money and they, and they weren't. And if you look at some of these, you know, you look at some of these things, when you think you're getting paid at McDonald's fifteen bucks an hour, you're making seventeen. And, and they got skills, you know, I mean, they're not, they're not flipping hamburgers. They're fixing H V A C units and other stuff, so I think.
Rodney's sort of with carpentry and painting. Tom's sort of with.
He can do anything.
He can do anything.
And so, Ryan can't do. Ryan's, Ryan's does a great job. Yeah, it's just that, what were we paying to put those lights on?
Ten thousand, ten thousand dollars.
And then we went to Columbus and all of a sudden I said, we're not paying ten thousand anymore, we'll get all signs. And all signs charge us two thousand dollars. Now, they're doing it for free. I mean, not for free, they're getting their, they're getting, but it's not money there.
Because when I first got here, it was ten thousand dollars.
Yep. I had, no, no, it, it changed, but we were paying ten thousand, we changed that the second year. That was two thousand eighteen.
That's how I got here. I came on, it was still ten, we still paid ten thousand dollars. But we didn't, but, but we had all signs put it up, we were going to pay it, but all signs put it up.
The guy, the guy that originally designed it, put it up was, was expensive. Why did Columbuses do that company? And then we didn't like paying them ten thousand, so we got all signs to do it. But they, they really, that's not their thing. And remember, if you remember, the lights would fall off and stuff wasn't out, right? Guys, we have, we're doing it, they, they're doing a good job. And they're lighting more stuff now than they ever have, so.
There's a company out of Portland, they've done the Velarrells House, I don't know. It's Bee, the girl on, on pilot.
Oh, yeah.
And then they did Eric Bee's.
Yeah, that's, they did a nice job.
Wonder what that costs? I don't, I'm not asking.
Uh huh.
Because I'm not doing it.
That's right. I bet your wife's saying, come on.
Yeah, I bet she's tired. I'm not going to do it. Just only have to get it.
Winds is on the street.
Forty degrees and snow.
Forty degrees.
Especially forty degrees Wednesday. So my wife's saying, we're putting the Christmas lights outside, I said, well, have fun with that.
Don't worry about the snow, it'll just be rain. But getting back to this two dollars an hour increase, that would recover all the total. You know, they, my only thing is that they, that's for, and all the friend benefit calculations and taxes and all that figured into it as well. If you give them two, a four thousand, one hundred and sixty dollar bonus, which is the same amount of money as two dollars an hour times two thousand and eighty hours, we don't pay that forever. Cost to them. They just spend more, more time.
You know, that doesn't show up in their E R S or retirement or anything like that, it's just, just a month.
It's a lot less cost to us instead of adding it to their rate.
One thing I see, again, I'm out, this is me, David's decision. One thing, one thing I see is making a correction in these guys' salaries. And then after that, they never get, they never get it, you know, they get what everybody else gets. That's, I'm just throwing that out there.
Oh, when's the last thing you said we've done this before?
Six years ago, maybe? That was bringing them up off fifteen dollars an hour.
Well, I do.
Again, I, I, I'm stepping out of this one.
My, I don't mind giving them that two dollars, because those guys are out there every day. They are doing their job.
The skill set, the skill set, the variety of the skill sets.
I don't, I wouldn't mind giving them that two dollars, but I don't have a problem with that.
When you start looking down, I mean, when you start looking down this thing. Um, Brian Elliott is making a quarter shy of twenty bucks. Josh Garrett has been here for a year. I think there's a two. He started out at a reasonable salary, he's at twenty three, twenty three sixty nine. You got Kim Harstie, who's been here less than a year, and she's making thirty one dollars an hour. Now, you can say she has skills too, but so do those maintenance guys, you know? Custodian at Linda Huff, she's been here a couple, three years, she's making seventeen bucks. Uh, Nicholas James, he's been here three or four years now, he's making sixteen bucks. And then there's Loretta, who's been here for thirty years, she's making twenty two dollars. And if we do decide to, you know, hire people to run the service center, we're going, we're asking her to do oversee that. Well, and she took on, they've taken on the jail. They used to do just this building fifteen, now they're doing the jail too, or the law complex and the prosecution.
I'm going to go back to what you said a little bit ago about the past auditor. I love him.
He did.
Uh, but my first comment was, how do you get people to work for this amount of money? And they said, because of all the benefits they get. I said, well, I had benefits when I worked at the unit, it made a lot more than this. He said, yeah, but you had a degree. I said, it doesn't make any difference, you, fifteen dollars an hour, seventeen dollars an hour, doesn't make, you, you can have all the benefits that you want, won't put food on it. It may keep you putting food on the table, you don't have to use the medical benefits because you don't have to pay. You're deductible. It's just that, it's just, and it's always been courthouse is a great place to work, but I don't make very much money.
Well, I think some of the other departments, you know, they've corrected themselves. There's no, there's no secrets in this courthouse or anywhere else, you know? Jeff has helped, he's helped his employees some downstairs. I think he gave bonuses, he's given raises. Um, but Robin did, they hook David Jeff, yeah.
J- line.
Yeah. I mean, so they, you know, they all hear that, see that, and they're like, why didn't anybody do that for us?
Like I said, I don't mind giving two dollars plus two, just want to give them that two dollars at one time.
Yeah, well, it's just, I think, I think Jack, I'm not wrong, they're just asking for two dollar increase. I don't know if the three percent's on top of that or not.
It is.
Three percent. Three percent's already on there.
Three percent's already on there, but he just wants added.
You know, and I don't mind bringing people up to a market competitive standard. And, and if we're going to do this, now we got to look at custodians. Janet of supervisor, temp workers, and, and maybe even, you know, Brian and Sarah. There's still twenty bucks for that.
This is a documented record with the money that you got to carry over.
I'm, I mean, I don't, I can't speak to that because I don't know where we're at as a government, you know, not just as a department. We need to get that delta of how we stand right now with submitted budget, so we know how much we got to cut to deliver a break. But we don't have it yet, I just talked about that on Friday.
I noticed he had my name on there, he didn't give me two dollars.
I don't know.
Were you on there?
I didn't. So it's not an extra, we need one, not today, but we got to.
Well. I don't like you, every year they ask for something. One year it was five percent, one year it was six percent. You know, you're setting that sand out. That's almost, that was truly unreasonable, it was going from seventeen dollars to twenty eight dollars. You can make three or four dollar jump or two dollar jump or three dollar jump, you gave them ten. No, it's not, it doesn't have to be done now. You have anything else, Janet?
Um, I don't know if we want to talk about the. I don't really. I saw that you want to go in the work session, you get on T V. We can do that. Because I, I just don't think they've looked up to anything in that agreement.
I suppose, they have, in my opinion, they have.
Yeah, nothing's been updated since twenty fourteen.
Well, Brad says twenty seven, that's the last time anybody, that's twenty fifteen.
Yeah, we just say nothing and that automatically renews and we got people that are not aware of that.
And that's the same thing, you know, I'm, I'm driving out to go home one day and they're out there paving the parking lot. That, it's in the suit.
Pretty case, got my son airplane, he wants old and hairless. Jeff Marshall. And then also need to send an invoice to Brian Wickline for their rental cost, please.
We're going, are you done, Brad?[1781.85]
I am.
We're not gonna be in a generally, uh, we're not doing a work session, so. Well, generally, we need to, uh. One forty nine. Hello.